... access channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comment. Are there any public comments from the board?
Yes. Yes. I have a couple of comments tonight. So the first is mostly I want to make the public aware of something and then also give some credit to the Lunenburg Police Department. So a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago rather, I ordered an iPad through AT&amp;T and it was stolen off of my front porch. Now for anyone who knows where I live, I live out in the woods, a couple of football fields off of the main road. And so I want to share this because apparently this is something that's happening. So in my case, someone was home. And when this occurred, and you know, we reached out to the police department, Officer Hill was tremendous, as were the investigators with FedEx. But I just want to share with the public what occurred. What occurred was about an hour before the delivery happened, a car came down the driveway and apparently dropped someone off who then hit out in the woods across from my house and waited for the FedEx truck to show up. And the camera footage from the FedEx truck showed that when the truck came and they made the delivery, the person came out of the woods and from the time that the package was put on my literally front door to the time, and again, my husband was home, he put his shoes on to come open the door, and within 15, 20 seconds, someone came out of the woods, grabbed the package, went running down the road. After reaching out to FedEx and the police department, apparently this is something that's happening all over the country. They believe that either the FedEx system or the AT&amp;T or Verizon systems have been hacked, resulting in packages getting stolen. So you know, just to make people aware that you know, it happens every day. But you know, if you have a package specifically coming, that's electronic and from AT&amp;T or Verizon, it may be best to get delivery instructions that allow it to be picked up somewhere else. Or if you are home when the delivery occurs, to meet the driver at the door. And then second, you know, I just want to also acknowledge, it's been an interesting couple of weeks. Someone rear-ended me last week and you know, before I could even call 911, I called them and within, you know, before I could even tell them why I was calling them, the Lunenburg Police Department was already there. Clearly they were doing some patrols. Officer Brock was amazing in the instance. So I just want to acknowledge the Lunenburg Police Department for their professionalism and then also again, make the public aware that when it comes to electronics, to be mindful that there is a thievery ring going around. We've seen postings from the Ashburnham Police Department as well, related to similar incidents. We've heard things in Townsend. So there are things going around that is stealing this. So I just want to make people aware of that. That's it.
Thank you for the PSA. Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Mackin?
Good evening. Good evening. Just a quick note, today's Constitution Day and I didn't think we should let it pass without, you know, acknowledging that. And I just have a few thoughts and I beg your indulgence. It was an unusually hot and humid Philadelphia summer in 1789 when delegates from the 13 states came together to rescue a nascent nation with a shaky future. The United States of America had been lurching forward for 12 years under the Articles of Confederation, which as a feature resulted in a weak federal government. It had no executive or judicial branch. States were free to raise their own tariffs. There was no ability to raise direct taxes to meet the government's needs. National defense was nearly nonexistent. It was nearly impossible to amend the Articles, given the fact that it required the unanimous approval of the 13 states. Finally, in 1786, protests broke out by poor farmers over debts from borrowing during their war years. This occurred in western Massachusetts, commonly referred to as Shea's Rebellion. Originally, it was a protest, but eventually it morphed into a armed insurrection against the state government. Shea's Rebellion even attempted to seize the federal army in Springfield and the federal government was powerless to respond. With all this fresh in mind, the delegates to the Constitution Convention convened in 1787. Delegate George Washington appeared in his full dress uniform and was overwhelmingly elected to the chair of the convention. Through that long, hot summer, they debated in utmost secrecy. On this date in 1787, the delegates gathered to affix their signatures approving the document. It was a magnificent and deeply flawed document, because humans are magnificent and deeply flawed. When delegates and elder statement Benjamin Franklin was asked what kind of government it created, he said, "A republic if we can keep it." It is up to us, we the people, to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mackin. Are there any other public comments from the public in the room tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move to Zoom and Mr. O'Connell.
Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
Awesome. So I just wanted to give a quick update on something I had talked about previously with programs and stuff that the town employees use. I was able to crunch the numbers on cost benefit analysis of using different tiers of Microsoft 365. Currently, my understanding is that the lowest tier, the Business Basic, which is $6 per month per user, is what's rolled out. And there have been productivity issues because of that, in my opinion. The web apps, that version only lets you use the web apps as opposed to the desktop apps. As much as Microsoft likes to market them as similar products, they're just not. The interface is different and for users that have heavy learning curve to get past with that, if they're using a different interface that isn't like the programs that they're familiar with, that hampers them pretty heavily. So from scraping the town website, I believe that the town employs around 141 employees and that includes the full volunteer fire department and a bunch of other users that wouldn't be doing as much heavy clerical work. And the cost that we incur if every one of those users is on Business Basic, 141 users times $6 a month, times 12 months in a year, is $10,152. The cost to upgrade them to Business Standard, which includes the desktop apps that everyone is familiar with and greatly expands the functionality of each of those apps, is only $12 per user per month. So $20,000 to the town per year. And from the productivity losses that I've seen, I think a cost of $10,000 is really a drop in the bucket, at least in municipal terms. I believe that's everything I had. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Logan, for coming back and giving us some more feedback. We definitely will talk about it and look into it. So thank you very much, Logan. All right, are there any other public comments on Zoom? I'm not seeing any. All right, so let's move on to announcements. I have three tonight. The first two are about upcoming events that I've been plugging regularly. So the second town official meet and greet is next Thursday, September 26th, at 5:30 PM at Low Places Ranch, which is at 441 Goodrich Street. If you're a business owner or a volunteer in town, it'll be a great opportunity to network and meet new people and to enjoy a wonderful event. The Lunenburg Agricultural Commission will be hosting an agriculture fair on October 5th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at TC Passios. You can find out more information about that if you are on Facebook by looking at the Agricultural Commission's Facebook page. And lastly, I need to switch over to the laptop now. Representative Margaret Scarsdale will be back in town in Lunenburg for office hours on Monday, September 23rd, at 3:00 PM at the Lunenburg Adult Activity Center. Are there any other announcements? Communications from other boards? I don't have any tonight. Does anyone else? All right, awesome. So we're going to jump into our first appointment. So we have a joint meeting with the Sewer Commission for three vacancies. And tonight, we do have four applicants. So as they all came in, I introduced myself to them and explained that we have a bunch of vacancies on all sorts of boards and commissions. So unfortunately, it looks like one person will not be making it tonight. So I hope whoever that is will still be interested in volunteering for the town on another board and committee. And I will go through all the vacancies at some point later on as well. So how this is going to work, I will invite the two members of the Sewer Commission up to the table. There is, you can ignore that microphone, there's that little microphone in the middle that will pick you guys up. So if you want to sit there at the table. And then for the applicants, we will bring you up individually, up to the podium. And then as I talk to you when you are coming in, I'll just have you guys introduce yourself and you know, talk to your interest in volunteering to the town and why you would be a good fit for the Sewer Commission. So let's see, let's start with, oh, and by the way, I do want to note, there's only two members of the Sewer Commission right now. So they're not able to have a quorum to call their meeting to order, but you guys are obviously still allowed to participate and you're also allowed to vote as well still. You guys just aren't going to call your meeting to order. All right, so let's start with Joe Hurley. This is in no particular order.
You can face up here. I did write, is this on?
Yes, it is. Yep, it'll pick you up, so you can just talk normally.
Well, good morning or good evening, board members. Thank you for your time and consideration today. My name is Joe Hurley. I'm 42 years old and I'm a proud resident of Lunenburg. I was born and loyal to my parents who lived in Billerica. I grew up in Barnstable and I worked in and around Boston throughout my twenties after college. As a regional manager of an organic and natural grocery store chain for the last decade, I've traveled and lived throughout much of the mid-Atlantic. My wife Jen and I sincerely hope that this most recent move was our last and we plan on raising our two children, Quinlan Five and Piper Four, here in Lunenburg. After living in cities and staying inside a lot during the pandemic, we're enjoying the increased yard size, fresh air and hiking trails. When I first received your letter, I did not have a previous interest in sewer management, but I've always been interested in public service and government. Having moved nearly every year or so after college, this is the first time I've lived somewhere long enough to allow for civic engagement. At the last local election, I noticed vacant positions on the ballot without a candidate and since then, I've been curious about ways that I might be able to contribute to the town. I've enjoyed coaching my kids' soccer teams and I feel that I can do more for the community. My work experience is in managing organic and natural grocery stores. I've worked my way from a cashier to at times managing over 500 employees in a dozen stores. Currently, opening stores and developing a new region here in New England. While I don't have any public work experience, I'm confident that my skills that I've acquired throughout my management career can contribute to the success of this team. Some of my skills include developing other leaders, managing meetings and projects, overseeing hiring, scheduling and leadership training, reducing costs, increasing efficiencies and meeting financial goals. I've never had a clear vision of how I wanted to get involved in local government, but I feel compelled to participate now. Since the rise of social media, I've seen the country become bitter and divided and it seems like many people feel participating means yelling at friends and loved ones on the internet. I'd like to take a different path and contribute in a meaningful way. I'd like to leave by example and instill a sense of civic duty in my children the way my father did in me. I thank you for your time and consideration today and good luck in your decision.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Joe. But we'll have you stay up just to see if there are any questions from the board or the Sewer Commission members.
Sure.
So I will start with you guys, actually. Do you guys have any questions?
The commitment is for a couple of hours, twice a month for meetings, but it really often requires much more than that. So I just want you to be aware that that's something that would be involved. But it also is something that you can manage because people can expand their involvement or keep their involvement to a certain level that's comfortable for them. So just to make you aware of that.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do more. I mean, what's like a high end? What's like a very?
Well, our former chair would get up in the middle of the night and go to a spill. But we're not looking for that kind of commitment at this point.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I mean, if you told me it was 30 hours a week, I'd have to fix you up.
No, no, it's definitely not 30 hours.
We wouldn't be there either.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
All right, so now I'll see if our board has any questions. So I'll start with Slav Meneke.
Sure, I just have a couple. First of all, thank you for submitting an application, being willing to volunteer. Have you watched any of the Sewer Commission meetings on YouTube?
Do you mind just moving a little closer to the podium so it picks you up?
I have not.
Okay. And I'm just curious, are you a sewer customer?
Yeah, yes, I am.
So you got the note in your bill, is that how?
Yeah, I did. There was a letter that there was a vacancy.
Just doing some marketing research, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I see on your application that you're open to other, potential other volunteer roles.
Yeah, you know, I would like to participate and be involved and I guess I don't have a specific interest in sewer management. I just was looking to contribute and I was in that mindset and a letter arrived at the door, so it seemed like a good time to apply.
Oh, thank you. I imagine with two little ones, it's not easy. So thank you.
They're just getting to that point where they can play with all your involvement, you know?
I will also say thank you and say that was a very eloquent introduction.
Oh, thank you.
I think we need people who embrace those kind of principles, so I appreciate you coming forward and stating those. Similar to what my colleague just asked about other committees, when you filled out this form, there were a lot of other committees listed here.
Yeah.
Did you by chance take an opportunity to look at them in any regard?
I didn't. Maybe I assumed that checking a box would suggest that I thought that that committee was open or something.
Gotcha, okay. And I'm only asking this for the sole reason, as the chair said, is that because of the number of applicants and the number of openings, somebody's not going to be there and we hate to lose volunteers. And so there are openings in other places and I'm just trying to gauge an interest with that, should you not? I have no idea how the votes are going to go, obviously. If by chance you don't and you'd like to talk about it, please feel free to contact me. I can tell you about any of these committees, about what they do and what their commitments are as well.
Sure.
But thank you for being open to them.
You're welcome.
Thank you again. As my colleagues have already stated, I don't have any additional questions, but I think it's great that you are open to volunteering. And again, if the other three people are more specifically interested in sewer, I hope that you do stay committed and look at some other opportunities because we absolutely need volunteers. So thank you.
Awesome.
Same. Thank you for stepping up. You know, it's how I think a lot of us get involved in government is, you know, I can think of my own self in which, you know, something happens, you want to step up, get involved, offer the skills that, you know, we've cultivated over our careers back into the community. So thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
And up next, I'll invite up Scott.
How are you doing? Thank you for the invite tonight from the board. I know, my name's Scott Dahl. I live right down the street here on Mass Ave, right across from Marshall Park. Been here for a year, me and my wife. Kids are a little older, graduated, last graduated college, so we find ourselves with a little extra time and we've always been ones to volunteer, especially in local community. Between even myself and my wife, we've been coaching for over 20 years. Numerous school boards were originally from basically Medford. We were on the new schools committee to, you know, trying to delegate the tricky work of the federal funding and where, what control they would have and where they build the new schools. You know, basically anywhere that stuff was needed, you know, whether it was PTA, you know, our church at the time, really anywhere that just needed a hand, we were one of those peoples that were there before to help set up and we were usually the last ones to leave. It's just how we were brought up and the, just how you wanted to present yourself as, you know, don't go into anything with just one foot, just jump in the whole way. So that being said, we finally found our forever home as we moved around just on the South Shore, trying to a couple of different places, lived along the beach and went from a complete different culture shock of living right on Nantucket Beach to coming up to a 100-year-old farmhouse down the street. My wife did grow up in the area, so we know it very well. Been coming up here with the kids for 30 years to visit family. So now it's time to really, you know, the house is just about settled and really get our roots down. Myself, I have a business degree. I was an accountant for 30 years. I recently stepped away. I did go to IT school and I did that for the same tenure. I was also an office manager and all within the same thing. Basically, I'm in the wine and spirits import industry and that's what important distribution. So between my IT background and my management and my business, I'm very anal. I'm very, very direct at heading on problems, but also it's to get ahead of problems and plan ahead. You need to forecast, you want to be proactive, you certainly don't want to be reactive, especially with the sewer department or water department. I mean, basically anything you can translate it to. But I mean, in the end, it's just my particular skill sets seem that they would be a good fit for any form of trying to help just management and structure. And I understand it's a small town, but it's a good amount of square footage and square miles that we're dealing with here. So I am on the public system, albeit on a state road, you know, whether that has any direction. But yeah, I mean, I've had a few interactions with the water department, good interactions, you know, just coming here. Everyone that I've talked with in the town so far has been very helpful on the government level. So I never saw myself as a public servant, but I also have no hesitation or doubts in my skills that I think I could really come and help the town or in any capacity. But that's about it for me.
All right, thank you so much, Scott.
No problem.
All right, now we'll open it up to questions, starting with the Sewer Commission members.
Well, really appreciate you coming forward.
Yeah, no problem.
As with Joe and the others, I think he'd be, you sound like he'd be a fine addition. Your business knowledge would be certainly helpful. And again, as Mike had mentioned earlier, involvement can be whatever you want it to be, but you would be a welcome addition and thank you for coming forward.
Yeah, you're welcome. No problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Questions from the board?
All right, so I'm going to sound like a broken record, but thank you and I'll thank the other two applicants in advance. It's really nice passage of, you know, four people stepping forward for three positions. That's a great problem to have. Along those lines, would you be interested in volunteering for any of the other?
Yeah, in any other capacity, that's not an issue. I don't have a particular love of sewer or knowledge of sewer, but it's beyond that. It's more of, you know, just management and organization.
Okay. And I'll ask you, have you watched any of the sewer?
I did. I watched a couple on the YouTube channel, a little, they had a little tough go, I think, because I think there were only three members in the last one I was watching. So that's when I, I did go in once, I received the letter from the town and kind of found the channel and stuff, you know? I would apologize, you know, I do live like a three-minute walk and I haven't been to a town meeting and I have, certainly haven't looked it online, but yeah, that was my first, you know, real experience with it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, thank you again. I'll just take that as a blanket. Are you retired?
I'm not retired.
Okay, so you're still?
I look older than I am.
No, 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 I, no. Only, wow. Wasn't at all where that was going, but.
No, no, I currently work and I quite frankly have a little bit of a commute. I work down near Brockton.
Okay, wow, that's.
Yeah, so I spend three, four hours in the car.
A bludgeon for, that's kind of a commute.
Any rush hour traffic in the side streets at 5:00 AM, I can let you know.
So how many, in the organizations that you've worked with and you've done, you've managed people, right?
Yeah, yeah, plenty.
And more importantly than managing people, have you had projects that involved teams?
Yeah, in a sense of.
As opposed to being that you were the boss and?
Yeah, I mean, we went from a, you know, $2 million single owner company to the eighth largest wine distributor in the country. So I was in charge of New England, but, and I can't take credit for the expansion, but I did manage that part. And we were in early in the mergers and acquisitions of that. So I became kind of a go-to of structure of how, you know, basically I wrote a lot of SOPs, a lot of, you know, standard operating procedures along the lines. And there's, you know, I mean, look, everyone has a story as managers, but there's a lot of different experiences, there's things you would never thought you would have to put a pen to paper to tell people not to do. But in the end, I think, you know, I've covered a lot of that. So nothing's really a surprise now and quite frankly, some of it's to be expected, so you can get ahead of it.
Excellent. I'm sorry to hear you don't love the sewer, by the way.
Well, I mean.
Luckily, we're not looking for people who love the sewer. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't have any additional questions, but again, thank you, as we're all going to continue to say, because we really do appreciate people stepping forward.
Thank you as well.
All right, great.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so we'll move on to the next applicant then.
Great, thank you guys.
And I'll invite up Eli.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Eli. Pretty much, I'm 50 years old. I've worked in the Home Depot for 18 years. I happened to work at one in West Rock, maybe was my home store. I worked in the one in Leamester. I worked there for six years. I was assistant store manager there for six years. I ran a hundred and sixty-seven people. I average receive 25,000 people a week in that store. We helped build John Appleseed, the memorial, and then pretty much we proceed, we donate product for Leamester to pretty much do cleanups and everything else with that. Pretty much, the reason why I'm here today, I worked, I lived in Lunenburg for 13 years and right across, on Mass Ave, right across Jazz Store. I happen to have my cousin, JR, or Vazilio Torres, which lives in Hickory Lake side. And he invited me over and we went over his house and we went, ended up in Dave's house. The first thing that he goes, he's like, "Do you got a boat?" And I'm like, "No, I don't have a boat." He's like, "Okay, so you don't need to sign anything here." So I was like, that one caught me by a little bit of surprise. But my whole point was that when I seen that, and I'm a people's person, and I seen that it actually made me want to come in here today, help out the people, because we are all good people at the end. And pretty much, I always done that in my life, that was the values that I was brought up with, you know, treat people the way you want to be treated, you know? And I believe that, I lived that by every day, you know? And I'm an owner sewer, you know, right across the street, I do have it. And yeah, and it's something that I always liked to do and the only way to meet your people, you know, the people that you live with, is just by working together and try to do the right thing for everybody at the end of the day, because it takes all of us to make it right. Pretty much, right now, I don't work in Home Depot anymore. I can pretty much, I'm H Back certified, I got my CDL license B, AAC certified, pretty much management I've done all my life. I drive forklifts, I drive everything that you can name under the sun, you know, anything that I put my mind into, I'm able to do. And pretty much, yeah, I can bring a lot to the table. And I like the opportunity that Caesar said, that it's a lot of opportunities up there that if it doesn't work today. Caesar said, that it's a lot of opportunities up there that if it doesn't work today, something else will work for us. And yeah, and I'm just nice to be here and thank you for your time, for just being here, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Eli. All right, so I'll open it up to questions now, starting with the sewer commission first again.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Great to have you here, would be excited to have you on board.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And could certainly use your help.
Yeah, sure, anything, just where, anyway.
Yeah.
I like to work out and everything else, so, I'm still moving on pretty good, so I still got a lot of years to come and I'd like to help, that's the whole bottom line, you know, and meeting people, that's, that's my.
And commissions are a group event, you know, a team player situation and, you know, we'd love to have you bring a part of that and your presence, it would be great.
Thank you.
Mike?
No questions?
All right, for the board?
Um, thank you, Eli. I was wondering, can you talk a bit about any business or any experience on the retail side at Home Depot?
Sure, yeah, sure. So like, yeah, so we built John Appleseed Memorial out there, playing floor, I work with Mike Robichaud, those are big people out there, you know, I work, I work with lots of preventions, so I do know a lot of cops in there, because people do bad things. So, you know, we, we had to handle those phone calls, I hired, fired people, you know, I've teaching train, you know, I pretty much put people on them, I win, because I'm, you know, I'm the boss, so it's a reflection on me to make sure that they're doing a good job and treat people the way they're supposed to be treated, you know. So pretty much everywhere where I go, pretty much I started in the bottom and I worked myself out and pretty much I ended up being the leader, because just the way I speak and I speak from the heart, so I speak the truth and I, whatever I said I believe on and I live those values every day.
Okay, thank you. So, is there any, anything particular about sewer commission that attracted you, or you just because you were aware there was an opening?
No, no, I mean, like, yeah, I mean, that did open my, my experience, but like I said prior, you know, living on the high, you know, Mass Ave side, you know, not interacting with a lot of people, but coming over here to the Hickory side, you know, and my cousin there, Vazilio, he has a lot of work and he met a lot of people and he helps a lot of people and that's what we're all about, helping people out. And like I said, you know, it was Labor Day weekend, I came up there and I felt like I was home at the end of the day, you know. So it was really good, that was the whole experience besides that, and then when I saw the letter, I'm like, "Oh wow, this is pretty cool." You know, what a way to introduce myself here in TV and show them, you know, what I could do, because at the end of the day, you know, we could talk all that, but it's actions better than words.
So maybe as a side note, we should think about getting more letters out.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Exactly that.
Let's send it to Townwide mailing.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I will thank you and I guess I asked, I asked Joseph and I didn't ask Scott, but I'll offer, I mean, I offered to Joseph, but I'll offer to all, all the four candidates, that if you're not appointed, you all have great energy, you all have a great sense of commitment.
Thank you.
And that if you are not appointed tonight and you're looking through the list on that talent bank of other places and you want to get information, please feel free to contact me and I'll, I'll let you know, you know, you tell me what you're interested in beyond this interview and I'll be able to point you in a direction of places that there are vacancies, because again, we don't want to lose any volunteers, but so far we've gotten three very enthusiastic, very experienced people.
Thank you.
And this is like the best lot of people we've had in a long time, so thank you.
Perfect, hey, thank you Tom, thank you for your time, I really appreciate that.
I echo all the same sentiments and again, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you and I do remember you at Home Depot, I had a issue once and you were very helpful, so thank you for that back then too.
That's what I do, you know, it's like you gotta put yourself in your, in anybody's shoes, you know. At the end of the day, you know, it's like we have to help a problem, everybody handles problems different, you know, but you know, you always gotta think about yourself, you know, and then after that, it's easy after that, because like I said in the beginning, treat people the way you want to be treated. Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Eli.
No problem, thanks.
All right, we've got one more.
Thank you so much.
Yep, so I'll invite up Tom.
Thank you for having me here tonight, my name's Tom Inge, grew up in Westboro, Massachusetts, spent most of my life living there, I graduated from high school there, went to community college for automotive technician or auto repair, graduated from General Motors School two years and kind of waffled around on some careers, got into law enforcement, I spent probably, that was probably the biggest chunk of my career, was in law enforcement. I worked in two towns and then the majority of the time over at Bentley University in Waltham. Went back to school in my thirties to get my bachelor's degree, thought that would be fruitful for my career, turns out that wasn't, that wasn't a good choice, but I did, did get a degree from Western New England in criminal justice and I left law enforcement about ten years ago, bought into a franchise, small business called Junk King, I'm based in Fitchburg, been doing that for about eleven years now. And I've tried to do some reaching out to support the town that I'm living in, I moved into Lunenburg in two thousand and sixteen with the hopes of making sure my two boys end up in a better school system. Seems like the town of Lunenburg in general reminds me of my hometown as far as the size and the community and the structure and stuff, it's a nice quaint town or whatever. So I feel like I've dug some roots in, trying to participate in the community. I reached out a couple of times to do some donations at the Boys and Girls Club here in town for their Halloween events, donated the bouncy house that they had the last couple of years, that train, giant train thing. And I try and support the sports teams, I'm finding it a challenge to get sponsorship, they like, get sucked up in twenty-four hours, they're all sold, sold off, but I do try and sponsor as many teams as I can, my kids are both actively in the sports. I don't know that I necessarily come to the table really qualified about sewer or sewage, I think I bring to the table a willingness to participate in town politics and I bring common sense to the room, I guess, as far as like, I'm not, I don't think I'm very biased, I stay in the middle of the table on, on most subjects and I want to see if I can help where help is needed.
All right, awesome, thank you so much, Tom, I'll open it up for questions, the same way we've been doing.
Thanks for coming here and wanting to be a part of the community more and getting more involved, you could certainly always use more common sense in any meeting or any commission, so thank you for coming forward and, you know, we'd be happy to see what you can do to help.
Awesome.
Something I should have asked the other, the other applicants, is that the term is three years, I believe, and the expectation that everybody's going to serve their term, if you commit to this, that would mean completing a complete three-year term, am I correct at that? Nope?
No, so there are two vacancies that expire in two thousand and twenty-five and then there's one vacancy that expires in two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, so that, that would be the term of, of how people would be appointed?
All three, I'm sorry, what?
About three are actually on the ballot in the spring.
Yeah, they were.
Oh, okay. So it would be up until next annual town meeting, but one of them, so how would we determine which one?
All of them. So, everybody who gets appointed tonight would need, would need.
Is until next town meeting.
Any of the mid-year appointments of elected officials have to be on the ballot the following year and they'll be on the ballot for mixed terms, so one will be, one will be, two will be for three-year terms and then one will be for a one-year term.
That's what I initially thought, I guess I don't know why I got this then.
I apologize, I hadn't thought of that question before, but I'll ask you, would you tend to run for the office if you were appointed for interim term?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm. And it would be possible for me to ask the other candidates the same question?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
All right, for the public, the answers were all yes.
Oh, okay, um, thank you. Did you also hear about this through the mailing?
I did, I have Townsir on Sunny Hill Road.
All right, um, have you watched any of the sewer commission meetings?
I've not, don't, I don't know that I even have, it's on what, cable access or something?
Uh, Lunenburg Access YouTube.
Yes, it's on YouTube, it's on Facebook and, yeah, channel Zoom.
Live Zoom, yeah. I meant the recordings.
My IT department helping, which would be my thirteen-year-old. I'm not a techie, but I'm sure I can figure out how to get on there, but when we get really overwhelmed with technology, my nine-year-old steps in, he's the head of.
Okay, well, thank you again for coming forward.
Thank you.
I will also thank you, as I did everyone else, I would say just to one of your comments that you're willing to, you know, join the political process and while being an elected official is, I guess technically, a political process, being part of the sewer commission is a very task-oriented.
Right.
Very, you know, you're in charge of the system, you're not in charge of wild policies that are, that would lend themselves to many political, you know, prophecies or policies or anything, so it's, you're safe there.
Yeah.
The thing is to keep the system running at a good price, at a fair price.
Yep.
And make sure, you know, repairs and everything are on the, so, but anyway, just getting involved in it is obviously a big step and I appreciate that, as I appreciate with everybody else and, and obviously, all four candidates, I think was just noted, responded to a letter, so for those people who say, "Well, why, why do we have the US mail and just rely on social media?" This is why, because we put out, we put out responses on social media and requests and got, have gotten very few, if any, well, I won't, I can't say we didn't get any, but very few, and here we have four people after one mailing, so.
That's made me rethink, I had a comment at a franchise owner group thing, we talked about marketing spends and paper door, direct door mailers and there's census, "Paper is dead." I'm starting to revisit, maybe that's not true.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, right, I agree, you know, it has a different, I'm not saying that all of them don't have a different role, but certainly not dead and this was just proof of it, so thank you for your responding.
Echoing the same sentiments, maybe I'm just mixing everyone up at this point, but did you say you're solely interested in sewer or you would be interested in something else?
Nope, I'd be interested in any position.
Okay, sir, thanks, just wanted to clarify that and I, my thirteen-year-old, they're probably in the same grade, is also my IT manager.
Yeah.
I understand.
Uh, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, yeah, so first, before we, before we discuss this, I do want to review some of the other vacancies, because I know the way that this was advertised was a little unorthodox in the sense that, you know, normally I think people decide that they're interested in volunteering, they look at all the vacancies, they consider all of them, so I just want to go through all of them, I won't speak to what they are exactly, but, so there's one vacancy on the agricultural commission, there's one vacancy on the architectural preservation district commission, there's one vacancy on the board of health, one on the conservation commission, four vacancies on the cultural council, two vacancies on the green communities committee, two vacancies on the historical commission, one member-at-large vacancy on the open space committee, five vacancies on the personnel committee, one vacancy on the public access cable committee, and then there's one vacancy for an alternate, alternate on the zoning board of appeals, I think we're also missing the finance committee, because that has one vacancy and probably two vacancies pretty soon.
Mr. Chair, Stormwater Task Force has a vacancy too.
Yep, the Stormwater Task Force as well, so there are so many boards and committees that do all sorts of things in town that are great opportunities as well, so I do want to ask, do any of those boards or committees sound more interesting to any of the applicants than the sewer commission? I know, I know, in this, because I wanted to, I want to educate them first of all, because I know a lot of them directly responded to this posting, so just raise your hand if maybe there's an applicant who wants to try something else out, so.
I wouldn't mind trying anything either.
Yeah.
May I make a plug for personnel?
Should you want to make a plug specifically for the personnel committee?
Yeah.
Sure, you can make a plug.
So, you know, although we have many vacancies, you know, what, what sometimes happens in town is when you get below what we call a quorum, which is the minimum amount of people needed to have a meeting, which usually is three members, most of our boards and committees are five members, many of them are, but, you know, the risk right now with the sewer commission is that they only have two members, so they need three to have a meeting. The only other committee that's in dire straits like this is personnel, where we have zero members on the personnel committee. And so if anyone has human resources, personnel management background and that seems more appealing, you can't meet until at least you get two more folks, but at least it will start that process, so I just want to make that plug, that if someone wants to volunteer to say, "Hey, I'd love to be interested in personnel instead," this would be a great opportunity to choose to do so.
All right, so is there anyone who feels strongly that they would like to maybe consider a different committee or board at this time? No. All right, so we'll move forward and we'll do the awkward deliberation of deciding the three that we're going to appoint.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just as a reminder to all the applicants, again, so we're going to be nominating people and voting on people, if, you know, who knows, we're all, I believe all of us, just meeting you all for the first time, so this is, as they would say in one of my favorite movies, "It's just business, it's nothing personal." So, somebody's not going to get nominated or, we want to encourage you to look at one of those other ones, just to be aware of that, I mean, we don't want anybody leaving saying, "That's it, I put my name in once and I'm done with the town." That's what we're trying to avoid, so just want to set that up.
Yeah, I completely agree, it would be nice to have, you know, whoever doesn't make it tonight to still be interested in volunteering for the town, but that being said, we will need to decide who the three are and me personally, I'm definitely going to defer to the opinions of your potential colleagues, so I'm going to pass it over to the members of the sewer commission to speak to any potential nominations that they'd like to make.
Well, we should probably do them one at a time too, instead of her slate, right?
Suggest the formal motions, however, come from this board.
Come from, okay, that's fine.
Because they don't have a quorum.
Yes.
Them suggesting who they might like and that this board make the actual motion.
Making the motions.
And then a collective vote of all seven.
Yes.
Why don't you take over?
Well, I wasn't prepared to have an embarrassment of riches today, this was wonderful to see so many enthusiastic, dedicated people setting up, standing up, all of them just for the first time, which is a blessing to the town. We've had a quick conference and we believe the first three candidates would make the best match for the sewer commission.
First three, I'm sorry.
Yep, so the first three, okay, so I want to just verify that real quickly, that'll be Joe Hurley.
Yep.
Scott Dahl.
Yep.
And then Eli Torres.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, like you all, we have just met these gentlemen for the first time, so we're quite sure everybody's, would be incredibly helpful, but that's what we're recommending.
All right, so I'll.
Again, the, I think any one of the candidates would have served well, but, you know, by matters of millimeters, you have to make a decision.
Absolutely, I agree, they were all terrific candidates, so now I'll pass it over to the rest of the select board to see if we're okay with nominating the recommendations of the sewer commission members.
Yeah, I support the recommendation.
Yep, okay, cool. So a question for how we're making this motion, I know that they're all going to be up until the next town election, but do we have to determine who is in which spot now?
You do not.
No, okay.
Because there's effectively no difference.
Right.
For tonight.
All right, cool.
I can make the motions.
Yeah.
Would you like to, as a batch or all, or one at a time?
Um, I think it's fine to do it all three at the same time, right?
Are we all in agreement on that?
Sure.
All right, I move to appoint Joseph Hurley, Scott Dahl and Eli Torres to the sewer commission for a term to expire at the annual election of two thousand and twenty-five.
So, any additional discussion?
I just, I want to just offer a comment.
Sure.
You know, I really like the background of Tom and if I was making nominations, Tom would have been in, definitely would have been in my top three, but I will defer, of course, to the sewer. So, Tom, I want to just encourage you, as we mentioned earlier, that there's other boards and commissions that would really appreciate your engagement and involvement and I sincerely hope that, you know, this, you know, sometimes when you, we go for appointments, you know, again, it's always hard when you have four people, because someone, you have to unfortunately say no to, but I really encourage you to, if you'd like to reach out to any of us, we're more than willing to explain what the other vacancies are, we can put you in contact with some of these other boards and commissions if you want more information, but, you know, when someone steps up and says, "I'm willing to help," we always find a place for them, so thank you, Tom, for coming forward and I know you're not going to be selected to. I know you're not going to be selected tonight, but I also want to give congratulations to the three members of our community who will, and, and again, thank them for, you know, seeing an opportunity to give back and being willing to be that person to do it.
Yeah, I agree with all of that, and Tom, you would be a great fit on any of these boards or committees, so I hope you're still interested after tonight, so thank you so much for coming in, and thank all four of you, and Carter, you wanted to say something?
We need a second to vote.
I seconded.
Oh, well, we're still doing.
I seconded already.
Yeah, we're in discussion now, so.
We still need a vote.
Okay, you want to talk after we vote?
Yes.
All right, so, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Including you two? You guys can vote.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, no, all right, the motion passes unanimously, all right, so congratulations, so the next steps for you three will be to go to town hall during business hours to get sworn in, you'll want to go see the town clerk, so she's the first office on the left once you go into town hall downstairs.
We have some appointment papers for y'all to sign, and we'll make sure they're aware of that.
Okay, yep, and we'll do that as well, and I'm assuming someone on the commission will reach out and be in contact with them as well, and, all right, perfect, well, thank you so much for coming in tonight.
If I might, I've thought that rather than waiting for Tom to see if he might be interested, if I might proceed to talk with him about the finance committee, and Mr. Alonzo about the finance nominating committee, I think he'd be an excellent fit there, we're entering the budget cycle, and we do have a, someone who's a short-termer over here, if I understand, when he gets his, gets his moving done, so I'd like to reach out to Tom tomorrow if everyone's agreeable with that as an approach.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Tom, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
The finance committee is a really great way to learn how, like, the town operates, because I feel like you, sometimes you have PhD in Lunenburg.
I know.
Figure some of this stuff out, but the, I think being on this board, planning board, you know, and especially the finance committee, you really pick up the gist of how all the parts work together.
I was on the finance committee for a little bit before I was on the select board, and I can say it was, you know, it's a great experience, and, yeah, you're going to learn a lot on the finance committee, so, if that's something you're interested in, definitely pursue it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to triple that, I was encouraged to, once I left the school committee, to join the finance committee, and I learned more about how everything operates in that one term on finance committee than I had learned all the time I had been around, so I encourage Mr. Edge to consider it well.
Yep, awesome, well, thank you all for coming in again, I hope that you are interested, Tom, in pursuing the finance committee or any other board or committee, congratulations to the other three of you for being appointed tonight, and thank you for you two for coming in, so I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we are moving on to our meeting with Bernard Lynch from Community Paradigm Associates regarding the town manager salary, so this is the group that we hired to, yes?
One minute.
Sure, yeah, we can wait a little bit, just waiting for the room to clear out.
Were that supposed to be 15 minutes?
I don't know, all right, anyway, so, this is the group that we hired to assist us with the town manager screening committee, so they're helping us with the entire process of selecting candidates and organizing all of that, and they're here tonight to talk to us specifically about the town manager salary, so I will pass this off to Bernard to let you introduce yourself and your group to the community and the work that you're doing, and also talk about the town manager salary.
Sure, well, thank you, thank you for having us here tonight, and let me just, by, by way of introduction, we had an opportunity to submit a proposal and, to the town, and having an opportunity to meet with the screening or search committee on a couple of occasions now, early this summer, and then more recently since the awarding of the contract, and we've, we have the process underway, we know that getting this position filled is a priority for the town, you're in good hands with Carter there, certainly, but we know that you'd like to get a new town manager there as soon as possible, so we're, we're moving forward with that process, as part of that, we've reached out to the department heads of the town to gather information from them regarding the issues that their departments are going through, we've had conversations just as of today, John Petron, who's really the one that's on the ground there in Lunenburg, is, is talking to the department heads, I know that he's been reaching out to members of the board as well, again, our goal here at the initial stage of this is to gather as much information as we can from you and department heads about the, the challenges of Lunenburg, the opportunities of Lunenburg, and what the skillset is that you need to successfully fill this position, our hope is that we can have this position out on the street in early October, so that we can then move forward with the committee to evaluate candidates, choose semifinalists that they go through an interview process with, they'll choose finalists, who, we will then proceed to do much more extensive background checks on those candidates, we do preliminary checks on all of the initial candidates, and then, you know, bring you the three finalists that the committee chooses, three or four finalists that the committee chooses, to move forward to the, to that stage, so, and then give you an opportunity, work with you to, as a board, to choose the next town manager, our purpose right now is to gather information to develop a position statement that we then use to market the position, and then we'll use on our own and with the town to evaluate the candidates, to see how they match up to what we hear from you and what we hear from the, the department heads, one of the key elements of that position statement, of the advertising, of the posting, of our conversations with the potential candidates that are out there, is obviously going to be, what does, what is the salary for this position, I know that John Petron had a conversation with the committee last week when they met, talked about this, and I think they moved it on up to, to talk to you about this, we've done some, some salary survey work in the area, we've been involved with many of the searches in, across the state, but particularly up in the Lunenburg region, and, you know, based upon that, we see salaries, with the exception of a couple of outliers, and by outliers, I mean, lower salaries than in some smaller communities with some manager or administrative positions that have limited authority and limited responsibility, we're seeing salaries somewhere in the vicinity of 160,000 to roughly 185, you know, possibly a little bit higher than that, but, you know, we see that 160 to 170, to 185 range, and, you know, our recommendation to the board is that when we post this position, we peg a, sort of a midpoint salary at about 170 to 175,000 dollars, that's consistent with the most recent searches that have been done in that area, which include Bolton, Harvard, Lancaster, and we think that that's, you know, sort of the market that you're, you're trying to break into and look at, when we do a search, we generally recommend not putting a range, not putting a, an exact salary, but putting a number with a plus or minus, showing that there's potential to go above if you find candidates who are extremely qualified, with extensive experience, and a little bit less if you find candidates that have a high upside, not quite as much experience, but, you know, you can bring them in and bring them in at a little bit lower rate to give them the opportunity to sort of move up the, the salary schedule from there, so, we think that number of 170 to 175,000 dollars is a, is a good number, you know, I, I would say that, at this point, we would, we would recommend the one of those numbers, and then, again, that plus or minus depending upon qualifications, and I'm happy to take any questions with the board they have regarding this matter.
All right, thank you so much, I'll open it up to questions from the board, starting with Selectman Emke.
Can you, or maybe someone, remind me what the previous town manager salary was?
157.
Yeah, 7, it was 157 and some change.
Right, and then I believe that there was a deferred comp in that, and that was an FY, my understanding is that's an FY '24 number, so we're now in FY '25, and I'm not sure what the current, if that changed at all in FY '25, but, but yes, that's the number that I have in front of me as well.
So my recollection on that was that it was like 4% or 5%, something like that, of our salary every year?
It was.
I have 4%.
4%, yep.
And one follow-up question, I'm curious why you prefer to use the plus/minus as opposed to a range?
I think it's sort of a, we like a, we like a single number that people could focus in on to grab their attention, it's sort of psychological, if you will, the other aspect of that is that it, it, it doesn't lay out the cards right in advance as to someone's thinking, you know, if we put out a range of, let's say, that 160 number, up to 185, you're going to have two, two reactions to that, some people are going to feel that the town is, you know, intent upon bringing someone in at the low number, and other people are going to think automatically they should be able to come in at the highest number and work from there, we think a mid-range point is one that, you know, a mid-range person coming in at the mid-range point, if they're a little bit more qualified, if they're very qualified, the board then has flexibility to adjust a compensation package built around that, and if they don't have that, we, I'm always very careful when I'm, we're working with the community, to not push for something that is too high, because there may be, we don't know what the candidates are going to look like, and if the candidates come in and they, again, they show great upside, we want to have the, the town have the ability to commit at a, a lower number, but we don't want to necessarily, you know, absolutely commit it to, you know, put that low number out there, we've done ranges, and, but we've found that this is the more successful way of doing it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on the town manager screening committee, so I've met with Mr. Lynch and Mr. Petron this past week, as a follow-up, I totally concur with Mr. Lynch as he's portrayed and outlined what the salary range should be and why, and that range was exactly what mine was when we first talked about it on this board back then, and I concur with it now, and I do concur with the midpoint as one number, because I think when you give a range, you get people thinking wild things when they're applying, and I couldn't agree more with his logic, so I'm totally for the proposal.
I would echo those sentiments, and I don't have any further questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
My question's for Carter, what is the ceiling of what we can afford?
We've taken steps to ensure that you have sufficient funds in the budget to meet a number that we think you might have to negotiate, whether it's a little less, or as Bernie says, a little more, we'll make sure that you have the capacity to do that. I'd prefer not to put out what that could be, do remember that you simply have to have enough money to meet the first fiscal year of the budget, but I'm, I'm confident that we can work this, and happy to talk with you after the meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll just say that this aligns with what I was hoping that we would say, and what I was thinking would be reasonable as well, I know, based on our conversations and not just this board, some people were saying that would be over 200,000, and, you know, that's what we would need to get a very qualified candidate and what other communities are paying for, I got really concerned about that, and I started looking at other communities, and it's just not what other people are paying, so I had this understanding that we were, like, wildly underneath, you know, the median, or average, with this position, and it just doesn't seem like we are, even looking at communities that are different sizes, I was sort of adjusting it based on the size of their budget to ours, and it seemed very aligned with what we were already paying the town manager, so, my instinct said, you know, 160 to 180, and I'm very glad that this aligns with exactly what I was thinking and what other members of the board were thinking as well.
Well, Mr. Chair, I mean, yes, I agree with everything you said, but I think that's something we need to note, is that on top of salary are benefits, and, you know, health insurance, you know, we're over 200,000 dollars when we're talking about a salary of, and then taxes, and we're over, we're over 200 grand comfortably when we're talking about a salary of 175,000 dollars.
Yeah, fair point.
And if I, if I may, sorry to interrupt, but I do think that there, there is, the market conditions for managers have changed dramatically, as I think we discussed with the screening committee, the, you know, the number of turnovers that have happened across the state over the last five years is, people, it's, it's nearing 80%, I think, that as people have been retiring, they've been moving out, the market has become very tense for positions like this, it's a seller's market, but that's, that 200,000 dollar number is really one that's coming more out of further east than, than Lunenburg, and, so, that's why we, we have a comfort level that, you know, looking at the market that we have, the, or region you're operating in, we think that 170 to 175, so, you know, we might say, you know, and I throw that out at 170, 175, I guess I might recommend that maybe as of right now, maybe we put in a number like 172.5, plus or minus, somewhere in between there, and work from there, down or up, and obviously, it's a whole compensation package, as one of the board members just pointed out, it's more than just salary, it's also the other benefits that need to be worked in, and then negotiation that takes place with that, so, that would be my recommendation.
And I also, just like Selectman Emke, it is a little strange for me, this concept of having, you know, a middle point and then plus or minus, instead of having like a very well-defined range, even if it's a very narrow range, so you don't have someone coming in and saying, "Oh, well, I want, you know, 210,000," or whatever, because that's like the top of the range, if you have, you know, such a big range.
I don't think I said, I don't think it's strange, it's, I, I just posted a job for, for my group, and I think we had to post a range, and I actually like the, the one number better, because I, I can already see that applicants that have come in and what, one of the questions HR asks is, "What are your salary expectations?" And you can guess what they say.
Absolutely.
Independent of what their experience is, it never fails, it's at the high end of the range.
All right, well, back to what I was saying, you know, I think a pretty narrow range that's right in that middle, like 170, 175, I think that's like fair to post, I think, like, posting that like plus or minus does give candidates opportunity to then come in and say, "Well, my expectations are like 195," or something like that, but, I don't know, I guess that's still open for discussion, but either way, I mean, these numbers align with what I was hoping they would be, so, thank you very much, are there any other questions or comments?
Is there an action that we're looking to take?
I would make a motion that we, I'll make the motion, I'm going to, I'm going to take out the 500, Bernie, because it just makes it too long, so I want to say, if we could, this board could approve the posting number for 173,000, plus or minus, and pass that along to the town manager screening committee, so that everybody knows what the salary range we're going to be advertising is, that would be helpful to get moving along to the next step, so I make that as a motion.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the motion passes unanimously, thank you very much, Bernard, for joining us tonight.
Thank you, and, and again, John, I know John's going to be looking to reach out to all of you to, I think we had a conversation with a couple, but we look forward to talking to you and working with you through this process, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Could we take the girls' call out of order?
Um, yes, we can, all right, so Carter's requesting that we switch up the order real quick, I hope that's okay, so I will invite up, we'll do the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club Haunted House on Memorial Drive for October 18th, 2024 request.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michelle Beliza, I think you all know me, I'm the director at the Boys and Girls Club in Lunenburg, this is my 19th, my 18th year there, it's our 19th year serving kids in Lunenburg, I think this is our eighth haunted house, which is amazing, I remember the first year we did it, I was like, "No, we don't have money, we can't do that," and Brent was like, "Yes, we can, and we're going to," and here we are eight years later, and it's such an amazing community event, and so I'm not sure what you have for questions for me, but we've proposed that we have it this year on Friday, October 18th, from 6:30 to 9:30 at our club on Memorial Drive, and we've reached out to all of the department heads, police, fire, DPW, previously Heather, senior center, library, school, because we collaborate a lot with those. senior center, library, school, because we collaborate a lot with those organizations and agencies. We rely on their support of either giving us some space or a light tower, and I think it's an awesome example of how this community can really work together to do something great for the people in the community, and it benefits the kids, obviously. I completed the special event policy for the first time ever that I didn't know existed. So if you have questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, and we're just hoping that you'll support this effort.
All right, are there any questions for Michelle?
Do we have a copy? I was going to say, do we have that? I don't see it.
I didn't see it either, which I was going to bring up, and I didn't know if I just missed it or something.
No, 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 any missed it.
Are you doing anything differently than you have done in the past?
No, it's just going to be scarier, I don't know. No, it's the same hours, the police, the fire does a great job helping us, they come and inspect the structure and make sure that it's safe. Police help us with crowd control and traffic control. We just, we do need Memorial Drive shut down for that event, and so I think that's the biggest reason that we need your help.
Sure. Hi.
Hi.
Logan loves this event every year. Both my kids do, but you know how Logan is. Food trucks and everything, same deal?
Yes, I think we have three confirmed food trucks, so if you're not a big like haunted house hayride person, come and eat. And the parking lot, we call it our Monster Midway, and so local organizations like the Bengals and the Blue Knights and the PTO and the Scouts, they all come and set up a table either with a bake sale or a game or merch, whatever, right? And so that kind of gives like a festival feel, and while your kids are running around doing the scary stuff, you can visit with, you know, town folk and support their events and organizations. So food trucks, good stuff. And when I have the names, I'll post them so that you guys will, the whole community can see them.
I just wanted to make sure you gave that extra plug because I think it's a great community event. I think that people of all ages can enjoy it.
Yeah, come hungry, and it's free to attend, to come through the haunted house and the hayride, we do have admission, but it's free to just come and enjoy some food from the food trucks and enjoy the midway and watch the kids get scared, that's always a good time.
It's better to eat before you get scared or get scared before you...
I mean, I don't go through the haunted house, so I literally will not go through it, so I can't speak to that.
They really do a great job.
Someone has enough clout to push yourself up the agenda, I'm going to support the agenda.
Thank you.
All right, any remaining questions or is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the event for the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club Haunted House on Memorial Drive on October 18th, 2024, from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
All right, the motion passes for zero to one.
The only other thing I would say is that if you are watching from home or you wanted to be part of a committee, come and get involved in our haunted house, come help us build it, come adopt a room and scare people. That's a real thing. So yeah, thank you guys very much for your support, I appreciate this.
Of course, thank you so much, Michelle.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thanks, Michelle.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, and now we will invite Chief Sullivan, and we have a couple of things that we're going to be discussing tonight. So the first is the ambulance operating subsidy, or lack thereof, ambulance, I'm mad about that, the ambulance uncollectible account write-offs and the ambulance rates, so we'll start with the first one.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
As you're aware, there was a press release, just taking a further step back, the closure of Neshoba Hospital, it's obviously going to affect our region significantly. On August 30th, there was a press release from the governor's office that they were going to make money available to communities to offset their additional costs for transports, longer runs, things like that. Lunenburg was not included in that for reasons that are not clear. The impact to our community is significantly less than some of the towns like Eyre, Groton, Shirley that were very much closer, and almost all their transports went there. That said, there is still an impact to our department, and that my request has been, and I believe you got a copy of the letter that I typed up quickly, to be sent to the governor's office, to our legislative group, and asking to be included in there, and the rough estimate of what I would anticipate our extra costs are going to be, which is, was around $28,000. I can give you the rundown if you want on how I came up with those numbers, I believe you have them in front of you.
We do, yeah. I just don't understand why we weren't included in this. It really doesn't make any sense.
I have no idea either. There is a master list of all the departments that go beyond those eight towns.
Yeah.
That have data that's been put into that. I will say also too that that was released in the 30th, no chiefs that I'm aware of in that area have seen one thing from the state as to what's available, how they would get it or anything. That was put out, and then nothing's been seen since.
Wow, and you know, I just have to say, it's like especially frustrating because we signed a petition and sent it to the governor, so it's like we were explicitly ignored.
Yes, it's, the effects of that are going far beyond those immediate communities.
Yeah, for sure.
If I may, Mr. Chair, what percentage of ambulance runs did our department go to Neshoba?
It was about 13%, which have been creeping up. Out of 760 some odd transports, we had 110 last year.
Not insignificant, okay.
No, it's not insignificant.
Double digits, yeah.
And assuming even half of that, that we're going to be going a lot further than Leominster Hospital now. And some of this figuring was also mutual aid because these other towns that used to be tied up for a half an hour are now tied up for an hour and a half, two hours, going further away, that's going to ripple out. We've had two that I would count as part of that so far, that we've gone to other communities because they've been tied up and their normal mutual aid is tied up.
Could I ask the chief to address how mutual aid in this instance works where we're just not on standby, that you actually backfill the other station?
We would, if their ambulances are out, they have what we call run cards, all towns have that, as to who they call next in line for that, they would call us, we respond out from our station, we transport, obviously we bill for that, but that takes one of our ambulances, or depending, we've had days we've had both ambulances out of town covering calls in other communities, doesn't happen that often, but, you know, that takes us out of the district and our duty crew out for, depending on where they're going, anywhere from 45 minutes to two, two and a half hours.
So I'll read the letter, if there are no more questions. All right, so stated today, September 17th, 2024, to Governor Healy with CCs to the legislative delegation, I write on behalf of a unanimous select board. As you know, the closure of Neshoba Valley Medical Center has impacted multiple communities in central Massachusetts, including their municipal ambulance services. The governor's press release of August 30th spoke to funding being available to offset unanticipated ambulance costs in aid of the communities served by Neshoba Valley Medical Center. Our board was disappointed to learn that the town of Lunenburg was not included on this list. While the impact on our ambulance service is not as extensive as some communities, it is still significant. Our fire chief anticipates at least 55 transports now having to go further, to go to further facilities than nearby Leominster Hospital. He also anticipates at least an additional 50 mutual aid calls to other communities. This will be due to their ambulances being sent out of their service area, more often due to longer transports. While we hope to be included in the possibility of receiving capital grants from the Department of Public Health, we must report that our great concern is with operational costs we will incur within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2. Our chief estimates of the closure will result in a roughly $28,000 in additional expenses for the balance of fiscal year '25. We would respectfully request that Lunenburg be included in the list of communities eligible for any financial assistance the state may provide to mitigate our expenses with this ultimately closure, with this untimely closure. Sincerely yours to Lunenburg Select Board. All right, so there are...
I would say that, by the way, on the second to last paragraph, you need to remove the word "ah" before roughly.
Okay.
I have one comment too.
Yep.
I'm confused, the first sentence is, I write on behalf of unanimous select board, and then sincerely yours to Lunenburg Select Board.
We're going to talk about that now.
Yeah. Well, not, no, not on that part in particular.
Just the language.
Yes, because the first sentence is, I write on behalf of unanimous select board.
It should be signed by the chief, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I think we can, we can give it like a quick glance.
I thought this was a letter coming from us, this is a letter coming from the chief?
My intent was, or when I spoke with the town manager, it was coming from you folks.
Okay.
The intent, then it should be, then it should be not from you, then it should be from you, Mr. Chair.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So it does need to be, yeah, I was going to bring that up as well. All right, is there anything else that we see that we want to fix?
I don't have any other thing else I want to fix, but chief, you know, I spent many years at the station, and I understand, you know, how busy you guys are, and you guys do great work, and this closure is definitely going to impact us all, and I appreciate your work that you put into this and this letter and getting all these statistics for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve and authorize the sending of this letter with the updates that we mentioned?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes.
Wow, this predicted the future.
What do you mean?
Because I talked about a unanimous select board. It's unanimous.
Yeah, yeah.
That's incredible.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to the next subject, ambulance uncollectible account write-offs.
As with the town policy, we've gone to quarterly reviews of the uncollectibles off of the ambulance billing. As we've said previously, this is, these are, this is more of an accounting function that they're being removed off as a liability off the town's books. They're not being completely written off, they still go to collection, to the town, to our collections agency, so there may be a chance of getting them, you know, seeing something out of this, but this is, again, as you can possibly speak to a little bit more of that on the financial end of it, on that this is more of an accounting maneuver than anything else.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly. Yes, so I believe you should have the spreadsheet in front of you that has the cost breakdown as to the uncollectibles and the reasons why. So currently we have $12,704, their signature needed for patients for Medicare billing, they haven't been reachable. We also have an additional 20 patients with $12,780 that are deceased, so those are uncollectible for that reason. We have another three for $1,798 for hardship letters submitted, they're waiting approval, and another three for $2,080 for Mass Health Free Care, they're pending abatement. So this is really, like the chief said, there's an adjustment on the books. Other than the deceased, they are going to, and the abatements and the hardship, the first portion here are still going to go to collections in order to draw funds. So hopefully in the future, we can have that revenue come in, but per our last meeting, we're trying to pull this quarterly in order to bring that in front of you, as opposed to last time, the last write-off I believe was 408,000.
Several years back.
Exactly, so we try to keep this in mind to give you this more often so the write-off will be a lesser impact to the town.
Mr. Chair, a question. I don't want to sound callous as I ask this, but the deceased, do we put liens against their estates, or do we write it off if they pass away?
The question regarding liens to the estates went to Town Council, I believe Carter can speak to that.
There is some basis for trying to lien property. The big challenge is sorting out exactly who the responsible party was, particularly if a responsible party did not actually own the property. So there is only one town that we found that did it. I would respectfully suggest it might be more trouble than it's worth.
Yeah.
But if it's something the board would like to do, we can bring you the appropriate documents to put that in place.
I asked the question, no, I mean, I, I think that if you have a, I think it's subjective, but I think that, you know, when you're talking about $475, $1,294, to me, you live in a community, the last thing you should get is a lien against your property for 400 bucks, you know, but I think if we were talking, you know, $15,000, then to me, that's a different conversation, you know, but I'm, it's, it was a question, but I'm happy to hear the answer that, no, we're not putting liens against people's estates for $84.45.
Many of these ones they've looked into when they're asked, ah, no funds.
Okay.
Had nothing to speak of.
Yes.
The process you're using is the one that appears to be most common across the state. As I said, we only found one community that actually liens properties, and there's a number of issues in trying to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's...
Was that Potterville?
I don't think it started with a P, but beyond that, I can't remember, sir.
Is Potterville a real community?
Potterville is from, it's a wonderful life.
From a wonderful life.
A couple of us got the reference.
I didn't.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I asked a question, the only question I have, is there anything in these amounts for this time period that raise a concern, or is this pretty standard from what we've seen, just that it's collected more in the past?
I think it's pretty standard.
Yeah, looking at the history, it's pretty standard.
Okay.
As well, the majority of the receipts are collected, this is just outliers.
All right, yep, Selectman M. Key.
One question, what time period does this represent? Is this a quarter roughly?
Early.
It's a last quarter.
I just had another question, Mr. Chair. At the very beginning, the section where you said that these were signature needed for Medicare, no response from patient, can you just explain, kind of, I haven't ridden in an ambulance ever, so I don't, you know, I have no idea how the billing works when you ask them for, I know when you go to the emergency room before you even see a doctor, they're wanting your information right away, you're signing everything saying, I will pay this bill. So how does that happen? Can you just explain that to me?
So I believe at that point in time, there has to be additional signatures in order to build Medicare.
There's supposed to be a patient sign-off.
Exactly.
Sometimes we can try to get that in the truck, that isn't always possible.
Okay.
So the billing company will try to pursue that afterward, and a lot of them, people are probably either ignoring it, it never gets to them, wrong address, things like that.
It also could be the state of the patient at the hospital, if they're not able to sign, they obviously won't at that point in time.
And Mr. Chair, if I can just ask a clarifying question, because again, I don't know the answer to this, when, when's the decision to utilize an ambulance, is that made by trained personnel, or can someone just ask for it?
Under state law, if somebody shows up and says, I want to go to the hospital, we have to take them.
Okay.
They can, they can have a boo-boo.
Okay.
But if they want to go to the hospital, we have to take them.
All right, and so is it fair then to assume that the patients here that are Medicare eligible, that they're not just showing up with the boo-boo, saying, give me a ride, that they're people who, it was determined that they needed to...
I'm assuming, yeah, the vast majority are legit people that need to go to the hospital.
Okay.
All right, we don't charge unless we actually take them to the hospital. If we get called and they don't want to go to, you know, for whatever reason, they don't go, that's, you know, that's what you pay your taxes for, we're there to help.
Yeah, I appreciate you answering the question, I know they sound probably kind of simple and stupid a little bit, but I'm sure many other people at home and myself included, you know, just don't know the answers, so thank you. I'm in favor of the request, Mr. Chair.
As am I. Any other questions or is there a motion?
I would make a motion that we write off the uncollectible amounts as presented to the board this evening.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
I was glad to hear the chief used his extensive medical...
There's probably a category, you'd be surprised, some of the categories they have for medical conditions nowadays.
Oh, I'm sure. All right, and now ambulance rates.
All right. Again, you folks have the information, do you want me to run through the slides quickly?
If you want.
I have 12 of them, if you want to put them up on the screen, if you can.
Sure, yeah, I can do that, let me just find...
12 slides, I promise, it will go quickly.
Yep, that's all right, no worries.
Are these slides in our, can someone direct me to where the slides are?
On the consolidated PDF.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the actual...
Page 16, 17.
Oh, is that the slide?
Okay, that's what I'm going to have to open up, hold on one second. What were the pages again?
Page 17.
You only see three, too.
You only see three slides.
All right, hold on, let me share my screen.
Hmm, could be more than that.
Yeah, I don't think the whole thing is in, but at least, I mean, it's...
I wasn't that abbreviated. Three?
Well, there are only three in the...
Share my screen.
There's a few more.
I can only go by what you sent.
Okay. My apologies, there's a few more than that. So I'll read from the slides and I will get you that, that you can forward on to.
That'd be great, thank you.
Everyone else. The one I must have sent you for some reason didn't have them all.
So I have something up right now. What is this? This is ambulance rates.
I gave you the actual PowerPoint.
I know, I don't think I can find it.
Yes, I have that, there was a PowerPoint that I forwarded along.
Do you have a title of it was? Maybe it isn't here.
Should be.
I see things about liens, the uncollectibles, municipal, I don't think.
This was a PowerPoint slide of ambulance rate increase proposal.
Can you email it real quick? Are you on the internet?
Uh.
Yeah, if you email it to me, I could pull it up.
Okay, now you can see.
Sorry, Chief, wait, you need a 12-year-old.
13-year-old available, Tom. I am not your technological support person here.
Yeah, sorry about this, I didn't know that you had a PowerPoint for this.
Want me to send it to the select board or to you?
I've sent it to me.
Okay.
Take a break.
Sure.
Is there a way to turn these fans off?
There's a dial over there.
Try it.
Should have just went to you.
Okay. What are you looking for? Oh, I don't know where it is, actually.
That didn't do anything. Oh.
Why, are you guys cold?
It's kind of like a fridge in here.
I love this time of year where you could go from 85 to 48 in a short period of time.
I'm pulling this up now, I apologize to the folks at home, since we're taking a little bit of informal recess here. Let me get the slideshow open. No, I have to share my screen before I do that.
Yes, send this to the chief.
I will, yeah, I thought I did, but maybe it got lost in the shuffle.
All right, there we are.
All right.
You can just go, it's all right.
All right. Again, with our current rates, we have not increased them in around 8 to 10 years. And currently, compared to across the fire district where we operate, we're tied for the lowest rates in the area. We're about 40 to 50% below the district average. And our expenses have increased significantly over the last few years. Inflation, we've seen an increased call volume over the last 10 years. We've added staff, we've gone to the paramedic level, which costs us more money in supplies, some additional equipment. So there was a regional survey, we looked at those numbers, these were from 23, but we came up with some newer numbers to see, to look, and put us more in a competitive range for the area. So when you look at the base types of rates, when you see the categories, BLS is basically a generally stable, non-emergent patient. This may be somebody with nausea and vomiting, this could be a simple broken bone. We're not doing advanced life support skills. We're picking them up, we're taking them to the hospital. An ALS-1 is, an ALS is a paramedic level call or an advanced EMT level call, that they're doing an advanced level assessment and probably doing at least one sort of treatment, whether it's an IV, whether it's some medications, things like that. That's probably the majority of the calls that we're doing right now. An ALS-2 is critical patients. These are ones that are getting three or more IV medications or at least one paramedic advanced level care, either cardioversion, some of the meds, intubation, stuff that a basic EMT or an advanced EMT cannot do. So just so you understand, when you see the different categories, on the left, the current rates, that's what we're charging right now, the proposed rates are on the right. And again, those move us up into the mid-range to maybe slightly above mid-range for the Where those came from was what a lot of departments have done, they've taken all those ancillary charges for cervical collars, oxygen, different things, they've all put them into the base rate. And that, because a lot of times we're using most of that stuff. And one of the issues when we come up with unbilling is, is a question, well, did you actually use this? Because it wasn't written down what we actually did. So rather than that, it just goes right into the base rate. Because we weren't paramedic previously, we did not have a charge for a cardiac monitor, looking at other services, we came up with an average charge of $324 for using the cardiac monitor, which uses, gets used pretty often, and that would be included in that new base rate as well. The mileage went from 20, 20 to $36 a mile, that is.
Cents.
Cent, is it cents? I'm sorry.
Cents.
It's getting late. That is, that is the mid-range for the district. And again, it brings us in average for the district to slightly above average. The ALS intercept rate of $350 is what most services charge in this area. That is a very, very small fraction of our calls. Most of our mutual aid calls were transporting, so we're charging the full boat. We have a few that we're meeting up with a service that isn't paramedic, and we provide the paramedic services for them, what other communities were doing for us for years, and we were billing that out to those communities. But as of right now, we're not seeing a big impact with that. But we do have it there in case we do do it. I think we did six calls for that last year. That's just a quick comparison chart of what Medicare pays, what our current rates are, the proposed rates, and what the region average and the regional top rates are, and just to kind of give you an idea of what we're, what we're asking to do.
So if I may, Mr. Chair. So if we put our rate, which is already above Medicare, so every Medicare one, we just take a loss on?
Absolutely.
Okay. What about the typical private health insurance rates? Do we have evidence?
That is what these rates would be. We're, of all of our transports, about 64% are Medicare/Medicaid, which I'll get to in a little bit in the slides, why, when you see what we actually think we'll make for money on this, it's not a lot.
No, no, I don't think so. What I'm worried about is that if we put people over what their private insurance, and the people are not on Medicaid and Medicare, but just working people who have general family health insurance, if we're putting it above what even they cover, then we just set ourselves up because we just did, you know, writing off some uncollectibles, are we just doing these and then we're just going to increase the uncollectibles?
It's, you know, a lot of it will be the private, some of the private insurances will balk, some of them will not.
Okay.
And a lot of times, it depends on what the call was. This has been an ongoing thing, that a lot of the insurance companies would like everybody to, to sign up with them and pay their rates, like you do with some of your preferred providers, and that's a big battle with ambulance services nationwide, because that's a nightmare for us to try to do that, because we don't know who we're going to deal with.
Right. Well, I know I had a big battle with my own health insurance on the one ambulance ride I ever had in my life, so.
And I think that was with us.
It was with you. You personally, even.
Yes, it was. So again, limitations with this increase, it will generate some revenue increase. The rates don't apply to Medicare/Medicaid patients, which like I said, is 60 to 65% of our transports. The federal law requires us to accept what they pay on those rates, and we can't chase people for the extra. Currently, it's about 64% of what we pay. If we go to the new rates, it's only about 25 to 37% of that. On the flip side, that does protect our elderly. Most of them are probably going to be Medicare/Medicaid, they're not getting hit with huge bills. I know that's always been a concern. This is something that does, does protect them. On the downside, and this is a problem that's far above our level, is the Medicaid, Medicare rates seem to be going down a little bit each year. The federal government wants to pay less and less every year, and that's certainly an impact for a lot of services. The estimated increase, and this was done in conjunction with the billing company, was based on our FY '23 call volume with the new rates applied, and we estimated a little over $44,000 increase, which again, because it doesn't seem like much, but again, 65% of our calls, Medicare/Medicaid. Consider, that's a conservative number. We're seeing a higher call volume than we did in FY '23, our calls have been going up steadily. We're doing far more ALS calls. It used to be, it was about 2/3 of BLS, 1/3 ALS, when we were relying on ALS services coming from out of town, because a lot of times, if it didn't seem all that serious, we'd back the paramedics off so they were available for somebody that was sick. Now, we have our paramedics right there, somebody that we might have backed them off on, they're going to get a monitor, they're going to get an IV, and we've already had a couple cases where that's like, oh, put them on the, oh, something's going on here. This is actually somebody that's a lot sicker than what they look like. So it's been a benefit to our patients, it's caught stuff sooner. So you see more higher charging ALS-1, ALS-2 calls, and we're also not paying the $250, $350 to other services to do our ALS for us, and that we were spending out $60,000, $70,000 a year in that. The first year, we saved 30, I don't have the number right in front of me, but it was 30,000 to 40,000 on that, and that was when we were still not full-time paramedic. And that, so that number, that number is probably always still going to be there a little bit for other, second ambulance calls, when maybe we don't have a paramedic available and we have to call somebody in. But the vast majority of the first calls, that's not an issue anymore. Again, the rate increase reasoning is, I've always said, it's to offset our expenses. We're not making a profit on this. And that, the ambulance fees absorb some of the expenses to support emergency services for our residents. And that, we're not a money-making operation, it's just absorb some of the impact of providing the service to people. And like I said previously, we only bill people that we transport. And that, if we don't take them to the hospital, there's no charge. Circuit breakers, again, for this, fixed rates for persons on Medicare/Medicaid, we can't charge for the difference. And if there's a challenge, there is an abatement process available. And that, we don't see a lot of it, but you folks do sign off of them when we do get them, comes up, that it's based on the federal poverty level for the area, but there is an option for that. Some people do take advantage of that. And that was it. So that'd make it quick.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't, I'm going to ask this just because I don't want to assume, but thinking about the mutual aid and covering neighboring towns, our fees, you go to Air to cover, it's our fees, if Air comes here, it's their fees.
Whoever's truck they're riding in.
And the fees don't change if you go to a neighboring?
Nope.
Outside your own town, okay.
Nope. That used to happen years ago, and the federal government said, that's illegal, you can't do that. So, yeah, you charge what you do.
I will comment that the chief has always been conservative with his numbers and very thorough in his research, so given the fact that we haven't touched these rates in 10 years, which surprised me, I thought it was sooner than that, but again, I.
It was a while ago.
Yeah, so, I mean, these all sound reasonable to me, and so I'm supporting the increase.
You're here.
Got several questions.
Sure.
So the first is, how much is, what is or how much is the average cost per ride currently?
Currently, pull back that up, let's see, on a current ride.
$1,500.
An ALS-1, so it's $868, add in probably 8, 10 miles, depending on IVs, you're probably $2,000, somewhere in that range.
And that's to go to Leamster Hospital?
That's to go to Leamster Hospital.
And so what will this, with these rate increases, what do you expect that to become?
That would go up to, an ALS-1 call would be 1810 plus the mileage. So, so that would put, again, you're a little bit higher than that. Again, before, you had all these different categories, if you go back to one of the slides, it said there was a rate increase proposal. You'd pick and choose those, those are all added into that base rate now.
Okay.
As an example, I can go like, the private service that was in the area, and this is going back several years, a ride from one of the Ready Meds to Leamster Hospital is $5,000, and that was a long time ago.
And the mileage calculation, does it start from the person's home or does it start from the?
From the person's home, not from when we drive out to the station.
All right, and just, I think I heard you answer this earlier, but when there's a difference between what insurance pays and what is charged, then that is on the patient or customer to pay that.
If it is a private insurance, it may go to them.
Okay.
And again, there is processes for abatements and things like that, and a lot of, you know, some of the insurances are better than others.
Yep. If you had to estimate the average age of your, of the clients that are not covered by Medicare or Medicaid, you know, can you say that there's an average age? Are we talking the full spectrum? Is it generally 50-plus?
Without looking back and running the statistics, I couldn't pull that up. You know, I could throw you out a number of 30, 35 without Medicare/Medicaid, but that would be something I'd have to go and cull the numbers through the system.
And then, you know, when you do the cost per mileage, it seems as if, you know, there's kind of like these preset destinations where it's Leamster Hospital, it's going to be one of the UMass or Memorial in Worcester. Why differentiate between the resident who lives, you know, on the Leamster line versus the resident who lives on the Townsend line in terms of, you know, why not a flat fee per destination?
That's what most services charge, even the private service is charged, from when they put you in the ambulance till you get to the hospital.
Okay.
And that. And again, for us, it's, some of that varies, going off topic a little bit, depending on what's going on with the patient, some of it is patient preference, some of it, if you're actually having a true heart attack, you need to go to UMass and Worcester, not Leamster. Because Leamster can't treat, treat you adequately for that, UMass can. So that, some of that plays into that, too.
Okay.
You know, on the flip side, like I said, we're not going to take somebody with a stubbed toe to Emerson in the middle of a snowstorm, even if that's where they're normally seen, you're going to go to Leamster.
Yeah.
And that, so some, some of it's condition, some of it's patient preference, some of it's the conditions that you're dealing with.
So earlier, you know, when we were, earlier in this presentation discussion, you had mentioned with the closure of Nishoba Valley, that roughly 13% of the cases were going there, and I think you estimated that approximately 55 trips were to be going further distances than Nishoba, that further distance being Emerson or are you saying Boston?
That's my anticipation.
Okay.
We, there's state regulations that can sort of say how far we can go under normal circumstances. Under normal circumstances for us, it's Leamster, the Worcester Hospitals, Clinton, Emerson, and maybe Hayward. It's basically out 30 to 40 minutes.
Okay.
We don't normally transport into Boston, we would, I say that with a caveat, we have done it.
Yep.
Under certain circumstances. Normally, we would try to get a private to take them in, but if the private's not available, which is one of the reasons we got our own paramedics, because they weren't available, certain people, they have a condition that that may be only be able to be treated down there, and if it's stable enough to take them there, we will do it if we're the only game in town. We can't, sorry, say sorry, you know, we can't go that far. But some of that, we, sometimes we'll even get on the radio and talk to the doctor, and that, it's our medical control physician to determine where we're going to go with them.
Okay.
But normally, we're not just, hey, I want to go to Boston.
Yeah.
It's not how it works.
But the, but the impact, I think what I'm trying to get to is that the impact for roughly 6, 7% of the community that's going to need, that previously had Nishoba as an option, we're basing your numbers, that ambulance ride would roughly be 2,200 bucks, that now they're looking at approximately 3,000, right? With the rate increase and the closure of the hospital?
You know, the additional distance.
Okay. All right, just thank you.
And Chief, I will correct myself, because I corrected you saying cents and dollars, it is $20 to $36.
It's not cents, it's dollars, yes.
Oh, okay.
$36 per mile, and it's one-way, you're not counting the round.
We're not charging for the ride back to the station.
But I'm sure that it's factoring.
As I always say, I can give an example, we talk like replacing vehicles, we used to retire ambulances back, we retired an ambulance in 2008 with 47,000 miles after, it was 10 years old. The truck we have that has, that's five years old, has 70,000 on it now. The one that's coming up on replacement is closer to 100.
Yeah.
And that's the difference in what we're putting on for mileage.
Suckman MP.[1753.33]
Select an empty.
Chief, I'm curious, so our rates haven't been examined in eight to 10 years. What frequency would you recommend, and what do other towns do?
We probably should look at them every five. Honestly, we had talked about that, and for the last few years, we were focused on the paramedic program and getting that up, so it wasn't on the top of my radar. And then, as, say this nicely, some of the financial challenges the town was looking at over the last couple of years, I didn't bring it forward at the time because there was a lot of other money-related things going on. And I just figured there wouldn't be a lot of appetite for it, so I left it alone.
Carter was looking at establishing like, I guess, like a list of all of these fees, et cetera, that can be updated at, you know...
Yeah, my recommendation is that you look across the organization and you put them on a rotating schedule. And so, maybe one year it's, you know, development services, planning, zoning, CONCOM, building inspector, border health. Next year, perhaps it's public works. Next year, perhaps, public safety. You know, so that, on a three to five-year basis, and then you stick to that rotation, you know, when the, when the town manager starts the budget process, it's, oh, remember, this is your year to do your revenue looksee. Because otherwise, it becomes, you know, somebody says, oh my goodness, we haven't done this in 10 years. So I think that is part of your budget process that you might want to consider adopting.
Thank you, Carter. All right, are there any other questions, or is there a motion to approve the new ambulance rates?
I move to approve, I move for the board to approve the ambulance rates as proposed by the chief.
Second?
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief, for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Ezekiel, you too. Thank you for coming in.
Did you have any questions?
From the warrants?
Well, I was... Sorry, it's expired.
No.
Okay.
All right, so, let's see, we have next, the interim town manager report.
So first, the consolidated PDF was Annie's first try. Left a document out, inserted a draft that wasn't the complete copy as she grabbed it, but I think this is what you were talking about at your last meeting, and we'll be working with the town clerk as we work through this to make sure it's available to the general public as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So, in our policies, I think the expectation is that this, all meeting materials are provided the Thursday before the meeting. Do you think that going forward, we'll be able to get this on the Thursday before the meeting?
I think we can work towards that. It may be Friday, but we can certainly work towards that. And we've talked about bench strength and some other challenges that we have.
But I think, you know, we always need to build in some flexibility with this, because depending on what's on the agenda, you know, sometimes we have things that come in Monday, Tuesday, and I think we should be allowed to update it with new material, you know, instead of, you know, throw a wrench into whatever discussion we're having that night.
I think it would be helpful to get the packet on the Thursday, and if there's a supplement that comes in...
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
Or Tuesday.
That's been my hope. That's the norm that I'm used to, is a single packet goes out. And that's certainly what we're going to work towards, at least with my time with you.
Excellent. Cool. No, this is a great initiative, though, and I'm glad that we were able to do this so quickly. So, thank you.
So, I'm not going to go back through the committees. I think that was covered by the chair. And I just want to step, thank all those folks who stepped up, and Pauline, the folks at the sewer department, who got that letter out in the mail once it was, once it was written. So we have a seasonal labor, a public safety front desk clerk, undergoing final background checks, and should be before you at your next meeting. We also have an assessing administrative assistant, and we placed that phone call today, and are hopeful that I'll take it. That leaves us with two positions open, assistant sewer business manager and the network administrator. And we'll be talking with the school department, may I just, is he okay if I just mention that? When Izzy's meeting in the finance team tomorrow, we're going to raise the possibility of one single network administrative team, as opposed to the way it's broken up right now. I think the biggest challenge is, when you have a combined system, you have to think that you're buying a service from the larger side of the house, and treat it that way, you know? It's just not the same, but filling the position has been difficult.
If I may, just ask for clarification on that. So, my understanding was that we had a unified system, and the schools chose to go in a different direction. Are we, are we talking the IT service provider? So are you, can you just clarify?
We're looking to revisit the way we collaborate on that issue.
Got it.
Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, the bid's been awarded and the contract's being finalized. Historic properties, we received two bids, which are now under review. The library exterior paint project bids are due this week. Pay as you throw recycling, we have a final contract meeting tomorrow at 2:00, and then we'll get that out per Mr. Alonso's request. Library teen room. We've modified the scope, both for purposes of trying to have a project we can fit into the budget. And by modifying the scope, I'm saying, first, you've got one wall that you were going to remove, that was, turned out to be a sheer wall, and it shouldn't be removed, frankly. But we would have a base bid, and then we would have add alternates for the painting, the flooring, and some things like that. The idea being, you know, I want to get you a project. And that would go out to bid by the 2nd of October, after Muir signs off on everything.
And to clarify, so when you hit the central register, you need to publish it the week before. So you're saying that this is basically complete the end of September, so that way it's published on the 2nd of October?
Right. The plan is that next, I've set up a Tuesday-after meeting, afternoon meeting, with the assistant town manager, procurement, myself, and the facilities director. And the plan is that he will have final drawings and a scope of work next Tuesday. Assuming we're in good shape on that, or we can get that into shape within a couple of days, we would send the central register in on Thursday.
Got it.
You then, that is published, I believe, the following Wednesday.
Yes.
So you don't have to wait, if you've got a good sense of where you are, you don't have to wait till everything's done. Go ahead and advertise it. And we can take, we can save some time in the process. So that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to do here, is to go through these projects, figure out if we can break them down into some of their simplest elements, and then get them out there with add alternates and get them on the street. Ritter Building, I know the facilities director and I don't see eye to eye on this one, but maybe you do the roof, the gutters, and the trim work first. The add alternates or the windows, you don't have enough money to do most of these projects. So to bid them as they are, you, with all due respect, you're just wasting that bidding time. So that's, that's, every Tuesday, 2:00, that's our plan.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And that allows me to, you know, one of the things that we went through today was hard dates. And if it's not ready on the 24th, we'll go to the next week. But I'm trying to get hard dates for these projects, to get them out to bid.
So, if you, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you to the interim town manager, take us through the library project. So, it gets published next Thursday, it hits the register on the Wednesday, and then take us from there, like...
So, assuming it's already on the 24th, or close enough that we're comfortable in advertising it, it would be advertised on the 2nd. There would be a walkthrough about 10 days later. We accept questions from bidders by the 15th of December. We take two days, only two days. I'm trying to bring this bidding schedule in.
You said this somewhere, I think you meant October.
Octo, I'm so sorry.
I was going to say, yeah, okay.
Not only are we compressing the schedule, but apparently we're rolling it backwards. So the 17th of October, we put out an addendum with the answers to any questions, any changes we've made. Bids are opened on the 23rd. Three weeks, I'm trying to bring the schedule down to three weeks. Can't do it in two weeks, it's just, it's too much. And your contractors will walk away at a two-week notice. Four weeks might be the ideal, but I don't think we have the time to do...
Well, that's my, that is exactly why I'm asking. I mean, I don't, I, this is all yellow flagging to me, in fact, maybe orange flagging, that I don't think we have time for a lot of these things.
The rules, the rule, I, all I can do, Mr. Alonso, is try to get as many of your projects...
No, no, I hear you, and I appreciate that.
That's possible, and it may require some last-minute shuffles, where we move things around just for the sake of moving them around, and then try to get the town meeting to move the capital money around. Because we also, in addition, we have the roof and chimney on this building. We have all the work at the Ritter Building. You have the roof at the Public Works. You have the floor at the DPW. There is a considerable backlog going back to FY '22. I would tell you that you probably have one or two staff members that aren't particularly thrilled with me right this minute. But I don't see any other option but to just keep trying to pour the cold one, showing my age when I use that reference.
Well, my question's, why I brought up the library one is specifically because of ARPA. I mean, the other things have to be done, and I brought them up in other regards, I'm just very concerned about anything we have in ARPA that we may not have under contract. And, you know, again, the time is ticking, this is starting to sound like, you know, a Tom Cruise Mission Impossible movie. You know, we need to get all this under contract in three months.
We're concentrating on the ARPA projects, but your other projects very well may have shortfalls also. And, I don't know what you have here, I'm just using a number. Let's say you have $100,000 here, and the project comes in in 100 and a quarter. Where are you going to get the money, but perhaps some ARPA money that hasn't been fully committed? You know, at the Adult Activity Center, you had a budget of 35. The lowest bid is 40. And that's before you remove any roofing, and you hope there's no damage to any of the underlayment anywhere. We're hoping to bid the DPW floor repair and the tree work, that is ARPA. Both of those are ARPA on that same schedule.
Is the DPW roof also ARPA?
It is.
Yeah.
It is. The facilities director concern is that the repair of the floor is more temperature-sensitive than the roofing, because the roofing can be done essentially in any temperature, whereas the DPW floor needs minimum temperatures for the epoxy to cure properly. That said, I'm hoping the DPW roof goes out on the same schedule as this roof, and we're no more than a week or two behind these schedules.
Is that it for your report?
Well, I just wanted to let you know that I did meet with the finance committee and the finance director. They did approve $5,000 to support the transportation fund until we can get to the town meeting. They did ask me to explore, the transportation program has a limit of 20 miles. They did ask me to explore that anyone anywhere within Lunenburg could go to Emerson. That's a little bit beyond the 20-mile limit. And we are exploring that with them. And we started the schedule for the fall town meeting. We'll have the draft before you of the warrant on the 4th of October. And then, we'll need your final vote on October 15th. And we're working with your finance committee and your moderator as to how they'd like that structured. The rest, I'm going to have to get you the revised report on the rest. As I said, Annie, you know, she did her best effort today, and this will evolve, but we have got to get better. With respect to Mr. Jeffrey's comment about getting these packages out complete earlier.
Anything else?
Unless there's any questions.
All right, any remaining questions for Carter? All right, thank you very much. All right, now we're moving on to old business, and we have a status update on committed ARPA funds, so pass it back to you, Carter.
I don't know what more I can tell you, but senior centers ordered their material. The price is actually down a little bit, because they can't deliver it the way they thought. We're going to have those kind of variations. We will be meeting every Tuesday with facilities director and then with staff to try to keep these projects, to try to get these projects moving.
What is the, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you to the interim town manager, are there funds that we have allocated with ARPA votes that are, again, yellow lining, like there are, we don't know if they're going to, we're going to get them committed in time?
They all scared to live in hell, I don't know. I'm going to be, I think when you talked with some of my references, they said if nothing else, he's kind of blunt, and you'll never have to worry about where he's coming from. Frankly, I'm worried about quite a few of them. But, you have two trucks coming in, middle of December, that are over $400,000. You have two more trucks coming in about four months later, that you've signed contracts for under ARPA, that are around $450,000.
Right.
So, what I'm starting to try to keep an eye on is, worse comes to worse, you buy the first two trucks with the ARPA money, that cash is now spent. And if you haven't committed your monies, you keep them committed to those trucks that are coming in in March. And then, with the goodwill and indulgence of the annual town meeting, you reprogram the monies that were originally for the trucks in December. So we start, it sounds like a shell game on a New York City corner. And frankly, it's a little bit like that. But at this point, I think the only wild card, and I believe Mr. Jeffrey's committee's working on their request for qualifications, request for proposals, everything else, we know what we need to do to push it out the door. It's just a question of time.
We're on the same, and I can give it, I was going to say it later, but, you know, the timeline that you have noted for the teen room, our goal is to send it over to Julie next Tuesday. So we are, we've already met, we went over the RFP, we're looking to meet again on Monday to finalize that review, so we can get it to Julie on Tuesday, knowing that it needs to get published by Thursday in order to get into the register on the following Wednesday. So we're looking to basically follow the same exact timeline that the library is on, except that it will get to her a day earlier than it sounds like the library would.
My suggestion to any committees that have projects is if they have vendors they would like to work with, or if they can give us a list of vendors, we then can get that notice directly to them, and I'm not just relying upon the central register and the goods and services. Over to you.
I can definitely do that with municipal design because of what I do for work. We work with architectural teams all the time, and so I can definitely find someone that I'm not conflicted with, and make a couple recommendations for at least three or four vendors, that we can send them directly.
I think that is the biggest wild card right this moment, Mr. Alonso.
So, so my next question, before I make the motion that I said I was going to make for the last month, is, are there projects that we could spend the money on that are ready, that haven't been allocated money? The next one's on the list.
I would need to look at the list.
Because I have to say, and I've been saying this pretty consistently... Because I have to say, and I've been saying this pretty consistently, I am not confident at this point in time in the calendar year that with the RFP not even being, being approved by the committee, to get it out and to get it adopted into everything gives us zero runway if something doesn't happen. And I'd much rather see that money come back and allocate the things that we know we can get bids on, or things that may have gone over that we have to fill in if bids come in over, that we have money to apply to them to get them done.
Let me just say that the challenge is for any project where you have to put together a scope of work and push it out the door for bids, that's a five-to-six-week cycle by itself.
Right.
If worse comes to worse, the best way to get money committed is a piece of equipment that is somewhere on a state contract, and even then, chasing those vendors to get written proposals so you can sign on the bottom line can take three to four weeks. It's, I've never seen anything like it, and I've been doing this for a couple of years now. So we can.
I don't, I don't have the list in front of me.
I, I don't either, but I don't recall there being a lot of equipment on the list.
No. I think a lot of them would have to go out to bid as well, so that's.
So the, the surest way to do it is to substitute projects that were in the pipeline, that you have capital money, general tax levy capital money, and then work with the goodwill and forbearance of a town meeting, getting them to understand the shell game that we ended up playing.
Repeat that, repeat that last part, that last phrase, the last part of that sentence.
The shell game on a New York City corner, you know?
No, that, they don't play shell games anymore. They play three-card money, but anyway.
The same thing.
Different neighborhood.
Yes.
I guess.
You lived in a different area.
You know, I'll take some of this. I didn't realize how far behind these projects, I've been here seven weeks now, and I didn't realize probably until three weeks ago how far behind these projects truly were. I, I'll own some of it.
Well, we've been getting updates, I mean, during my tenure as chair, I asked, I saw that these projects were not moving, and I asked for updates every other month on where we were at the capital plan, and it's been pretty clear that for the, for the big part of the last year, not much has actually happened, and that too many projects are sitting out from years back. So, I mean, it, it's not news, we, this information has been coming to us regularly with little to, little updates, and it's been coming to us almost every year of the month. And I know that the previous town manager skipped a couple of months when there was absolutely no updates from three months prior or two months prior, but, but I, I agree that this is a problem, but it's been a problem for, for a while.
I've never turned back a dollar to the federal or state government, and I don't intend this job to be the first time I do it.
Well, I mean, if I may offer an opinion, I, I mean, I know, Mr. Alonso's been pretty clear with his perspective, I think I just have a different one. You know, I think that we have right now, it looks like, four projects that are on the same bidding cycle, basically. And, you know, if we're not making decisions today on where we're going to be re-appropriating the funds, then my opinion is that, you know, if come October, our first meeting in October, which I believe is the first.
Yep.
That come October 1st, if any of these things are not out to bid and published as they should be, then the fund should be withdrawn, because that, that then provides us with 90 days. I mean, October's a full month, you know, November, so that gives us 90 days to reevaluate what remains and what we can quickly get out the door, or at least to have that conversation come October the 1st. But I, I don't think it's advantageous to, for us to withdraw funds that, that are already in cycle to get expended and under contract by the end of next month and leave it all sitting there for two weeks while we don't meet again.
Well, I just want to, I would have to respectfully degrees, disagree on you having 90 days. I want to revisit two timeframes I gave you. If it is a piece of equipment.
Yep.
Where there's a state contractor, you're probably looking at three to four weeks just to get them to react to you and give you that, you know, four-page quote on, on the, the six-wheel dump truck or whatever it is. They're just not reacting, and you're not the only town in this position.
Correct.
So you need to figure five weeks, three to four weeks to get the bid from them, a couple of days for, you know, DPW or somebody to look to make sure it's, everything's there, and then get a signature and get it back so it's timestamped in time.
But if we start that process on October the 1st, I mean, it's, based on your professional experience, is it fair to, to assume that we would likely be complete within those 90 days?
Depending upon how you're reprogramming the money, if you have equipment to buy.
Yes.
I mean, the only viable way, or if you have real, you have real drawings on this building, you have real drawings on other buildings, that, you know, I, I looked at some drawings today, 2022 for this building. If you have real drawings ready to go, that's six to eight weeks. The only way to, the only viable way to do it that I can see sitting there right this minute, and I could be wrong, won't be the first time, is equipment.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I will ask the interim town manager, between then and August, and October 1st, our next meeting, so first of all, I will say, I am not comfortable, I was going to make a motion to withdraw the ARPA funds because it's not even out to bid, but you know what? I'm going to defer to October 1st noting that the risk that other members are taking, but I'm willing to go along with it. The two weeks in the interim, I'd like to see if you can talk, because the capital planning presentations are coming up this fall, find out what equipment the departments are asking for that are on that list, and have ready something that has all of that for us, so that we can switch if we need to on a dime and get that started on the October 1st meeting.
Okay.
Are you saying okay because it's doable? Are you saying okay because it's 9:15?
I say okay because I work at the will of the select board, and if that's what you want, I will.
Well, I'm offering that as one person. I am.
I will figure out how to get it done. Now, it may, I may come in on two wheels, you know, at 5:00 PM on the 1st, but we will, we will look at and, and develop an alternative approach. Sure. Yeah.
I'm much more comfortable with that, too, because it makes no sense to de-allocate funds tonight without a plan to reallocate them, and then leave hundreds of thousands of dollars unallocated for a couple of weeks, first of all. Second of all, even if we did, there's still a risk inherent in reallocating hundreds of thousands of dollars. So if we do it with ones that are going to be simple purchases, nothing that's going out to bid, then that would be a little better.
Or things that already have drawings that we could go, have ready to go out to bid that day.
So we would need a solid plan for reallocation.
That's what I'm asking for.
If it gets to that point.
Well.
So, we're a five-member board, so let's let other members chime in, please. Salkum Emke.
Yeah, I think I've been saying since March that the clock's been ticking. I, I've had the December 31st in my crosshairs for a while, and time goes by so fast. I, I don't want to lose a nickel.
I don't think any of us want to.
I mean, if it gets to the end of the year and, you know, open that WB Mason catalog and, and order some ink toner, paper, I don't care, hens, something. So I think, you know, I, I defer to the, the experience of the interim town manager having gone through this before and the time and the runway we need to complete this, to meet that year-end deadline. If it's equipment, I mean, I don't, it's kind of a unfortunate situation in the sense that we're going to get what we can and maybe not what we want or need the most, but that train has left the station. So thinking about vehicles and equipment, I just want to mention, school had a, had a truck, I believe, on their, somewhere, on one of their requests, capital requests list, I forget for what year.
I think that's upcoming.
That's something.
Was the meeting that I sat in on, you watched, it was discussed that evening?
It's on a pickup with, I don't know, Mr. Heavy has, has a truck in mind.
Yeah, I think it was a one-ton with, fully equipped.
Mm-hmm.
Shouldn't take you much longer than 10 months to get.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here October 1st, so I will have to miss that discussion. But I'm uncomfortable waiting, to be honest. Certainly don't want to wait past, I mean, I'm already out of my comfort zone waiting, so that's my two cents.
Salkum Moore.
I just wanted to echo that I think asking the interim town manager to come up with that alternative plan that we can take action on the 1st is a great idea, but I appreciate how much work that will put on you and the staff, so if there's, you know, I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do, but I do appreciate any work that you're going to put into that, because I know it's a monumental task for us to ask, and it's appreciated.
Well, well, that's actually the easy part. I mean, Julie's carrying the, the weight at this point. This stuff has got to get out the, the door.
All right. Any remaining questions or discussion on ARPA for tonight?
I do, I do want to comment on one thing that is bothering me in this. You know, last week, we heard about the library, and the library's been meeting about the teen center and everything, and there's been a constant, a constant back and forth, working with designers and everything, and it's been a constant project. But one of the articles that we're talking about that was got, that got committed, got committed last year and hasn't, there was no reason why we're in this position with the RFP not even being out. They didn't have a meeting for 10 months. People in March on this board, people in April, May, June, certainly June and July, were saying that this was a problem, and we shouldn't have been up against a deadline because the committee never met. The committee didn't, the, the committee didn't even see the RFP till last Monday. That's on us. That's on the committee. You know, it's not like they were working and they ran into problems. They just didn't meet at all for 10 months when they had $225,000 allocated. Now, we're trying to get it under the wire and causing a, a lot of anxiety, certainly anxiety for me, I don't want to speak for anybody else, and it shouldn't have been that way, because this should have been taken care of over the summer pretty readily. And so I don't like the fact that we're in this position because of inactivity. If activity happens and things come in and, you know, projects escalate because of design issues, that's one thing, but when there's inactivity and we're up against a deadline, that's just hard to swallow. And that's the last I'll say of it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. I think there's two parts. So, I mean, I fully disagree with that. I think, you know, I think if we bring it to kind of like what everyone does at home, you know, if you're doing a renovation on your house and you want it to happen next fall, you know, what you don't want to do is you don't want to get a cost estimate too far in advance as we did previously, because then it's wrong. I think that there's definitely a need to resocialize the project. I think we all can agree that this was not the spring to bring it forward, as a town manager advised us, and, and I don't, I, I think the timeline that we're on is, is okay, but I also think that the, you know, we've had, in addition to the capital requests that have been asked for from staff, that we've had two go-arounds where multiple entities have requested ARPA funds, and that perhaps in our discussion on October the 1st, that in addition to evaluating those capital requests that are coming out, that we also take a look, I remember some council of aging items that didn't get funded, that there may also be things that have already been requested from ARPA that we can commit funds to that are already on the list as well.
All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just have to say one thing that has been bugging me. The fact that an RFP was not brought forward at town meeting, or the project wasn't brought forward at town meeting, I think is irrelevant to having an RFP ready to go. So having an RFP out and getting numbers and then being out of date nine months, okay, fine, but you could be sitting on RFP, ready to, to, you know, hand it out the door for review. So that, that's my disappointment of why it hasn't been ready to go, and I'll just leave it at that.
All right. Moving on to current business, we're going to take care of minutes, warrants, and action items first, and committee reports as well, then we'll go into our goals workshop, which we're still doing tonight, a little later than I thought, but that's all right. So minutes, we have two sets of minutes tonight, let's see, December 5th, 2023, and September 10th, 2024. Are there any questions or recommended edits for those two sets of minutes?
So I sent some edits to Annie, some got in there, and then I sent some later today that didn't get in. It's just some general comments about, the ones I sent later today were general about calling Carter Mr. Terenzini or interim town manager, you know, some details of making the minutes a little, I don't want to say formal, but more official. So those haven't, Annie hasn't had a chance to, to modify those at all.
I saw so many, many of the main, the same things, and I was working on my goals last night that I submitted to everybody, so I didn't get a chance to make the recommendation changes, so I'm not ready to vote on these just yet. I, I would like to see, again, there's some, some basic things that, like the naming of people, that you should use people's names, you know, and, you know, Carter shouldn't be Carter in there, it should be Mr. Terenzini, and the chair and the vice chair should be Chair Nuzo Loan, vice chair Jeffries instead of member, and the three members, you wouldn't really put clerk in front of it, but you could, I guess. I mean, it's just, these are like basic minute-taking notes, and then some of the, like the committee, the finance, finance committee, appointment committee, the appointment committee part was picking off, so it looked like I was reporting on the finance committee, and, again, I don't know who, how they're being generated, but if they're being generated artificially, you know, that was clearly stated when I said what committee I was reporting on, so.
Are they AI-generated? Do you know?
I know that she started to, and they weren't really great.
Right.
Even after being people-read.
I do notice that I've, I've had to make more edits and recommendation changes in the last three months than I had in the past three years.
And it's hard to track. I think we're all submitting corrections and comments, and then when are they all collected? And what version of the minutes are we actually voting on?
Can I suggest that, I'm seeing some things in your operating procedures, well, that either don't exist or could use some work. It's 9:30. I would like to, not that anybody wants to come out again, but I would like to suggest that you consider scheduling just a workshop, not lots of citizen comments, not formal agenda items, get together down here, little informal, do your goals, we'll bring some process issues before you, try to get a better handle on this, and bring minutes back to you in a manner that is, is more fitting what you're looking for.
All right.
And, and you know, there's another issue or two that maybe would be good to be workshopped, if you will. I could work with the chairman, and we could add that to the agenda. That is, that is my suggestion to you as a path forward.
Yeah, that's fine to me. What do other members think?
If I may, I think that's a great idea. I agree, having a workshop separate, because we know our time is ticking and it's getting late. But regarding minutes, I think member Emke mentioned, you know, it's hard to track, so if, when we do do this, if that's how we move forward, if we can have a list of the ones that are still pending, because I feel like there's ones that we've sent back but we haven't got back again, and it's hard, it's hard to track which ones we're at, so I think having a comprehensive list of, you know, ones she submitted to us that we've sent back, kind of a thing, would be helpful as well.
All right. Cool. Well, that kind of leads into action items, so, all right, we'll go to warrants. We have one warrant, one massive warrant. You guys want me to pass the whole thing down?
Is this payable?
No, this is, yes, accounts payable. Do you want me to pass the whole thing down, or?
No, just that.
Okay.
And while you're doing that, Mr. Chair, I want to publicly thank the finance director for sending the email explaining why we were getting some warrants because of the change in the payroll schedule, which made sense to me, and I, in the payroll schedule, which made sense to me, and I appreciate his explanation.
All right, any action items? Oh, I'm just realizing I didn't read that. Can I see that back real quickly? So this is an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $689,327.17. Sorry about that. All right, any action items?
I have some, I think, for the interim town manager. One that popped into my head, and I just want to say it before I forget it, the status of 9/25 Mass Ave. I think, oh, his eyes just bugged, like.
I drove by it this morning and said, what am I doing with this?
Okay. Yeah, I looked, I mean, we got, the BSC group presented to us on June 11th, and then the former town manager gave us a report on the 23rd. I thought it was going out for RFP. I don't know if it has gone out even.
So I have several properties that I want to discuss with the finance team tomorrow afternoon.
Okay.
9/25 needs to be offered. You're getting a warrant article to sell the Brooks property, which you're going to need to discuss.
Okay.
Because of the land being adjacent to the school and the library. We've got some tax properties, so I will look into that and have a report for you.
Okay, good. Another one, you've mentioned it twice now in your weekly report about the, the facilities director and the projects and us not having enough money to cover them. I wonder if we can get a summary overview of those projects and kind of where they stand?
Yes.
Just to help, if I see it all consolidated, get my head around it.
Most of them haven't been cost estimated. I can give you a status of the project, how much money you have.
Okay.
From what year. Some of these go back three fiscal years now.
Yeah, I'm not surprised.
When I tell you you don't have enough money, let me just, just so you understand, I worked construction for eight years, then managed the construction of several of the state's park system, and managed the rehabilitation of a number of apartment buildings and the like. So it's one of those, you know, you know when you know something, just, I can tell you, there isn't enough money there. So I won't be able to give you a cost estimate, but I will give you a schedule of all the projects.
Just even having all of them in one, one summary would be helpful.
Absolutely.
And then based on what we heard and saw tonight with the success of those letters in the sewer bill, can we look into putting a letter in the warrant that is mailed out for a fall town meeting?
Oh, absolutely. And we can have a stack of volunteer-to-serve-your-town forms.
I mean, we always have the forms at, at town meeting, but.
Oh, absolutely. Right now, I'm working, I'm not, so some towns just do the warrant, and then they do a voter's guide, some towns smash it all together. So right now, I'm working with your, your town moderator and your finance committee chairman of, how do you want me to do this thing? Because you have to, I have to get this thing mailed out to everybody.
Yeah.
So the good news is, if we smash it all together, it's one simple document. The bad news is, it's more to print it and mail it.
Right.
I'll bring you two samples at the workshop.
But since we're going to be doing mailing to every house in town, can we take advantage of that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Because I was really happy to see.
You all saw the letter that I did for the sewer commission, right? Yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'll do it inside the front cover, so it's the first thing they see when they open it.
Any other action items?
Can I just give you one update?
Sure.
I did meet with the, I'm sorry, I didn't put this in my report. I met with police chief, met with DPW. They will have their final report to me on Flat Hill Road by the 25th of this month. They will appear in front of you on October 1.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Try to get that off the list to the extent we can.
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just saw the one, too, before you came on. Just keeping it, again, on our radar, the munitions issues and the IT transition. I know you've had a lot on your plate, but just keeping that on our radar as well.
Yep, totally.
You have one of the busier traffic control centers that I've worked with, yes.
All right, any committee reports?
Oh, Budget Task Force met last night. We had, department heads, we had DPW director, police chief, fire chief, the union reps, teachers' union reps, I'm going to forget. We had, I mean, I want to thank them, they stayed for the whole meeting, it was a long meeting, to review what they're hearing from, from the unions, you know, in terms of salaries and open positions and retention, and I think it's probably, you're going to hear a lot of the same things at the listening, upcoming listening sessions, is my expectation. We have another Budget Task Force meeting on Monday, the 23rd, and there's a school committee meeting tomorrow, and Stormwater Task Force meets on Thursday this week.
Town manager screening committee met on Wednesday and discussed what we, about how to proceed with Community Paradigm. One of those discussions was about the salary, which we got brought to the board today, and the rest of it was the timeline. Everybody on this board and department heads should have gotten an email from Community Paradigm saying they want to have a discussion with everybody and get their impression about what we are looking for in a town manager. So they will collate that, and we're looking, that this process will all be done by the end of the month, and the final ad go out the 1st of next month. So that gives us a two- or three-week timeframe, so hopefully by, by the end of October, we already have candidates that we can schedule interviews with. That is a very optimistic timeline.
I don't have any.
Library's meeting next week, and the municipal design committee met last week, as I have discussed, and we're looking to meet again next week. I do have a question, though, for Mr. Alonso and his committee report. Is there a rubric or kind of guidelines that you guys have agreed to for how you're screening in terms of like how you're evaluating or how you intend, or is that something that...
That will be developed with Community Paradigm. We don't have that right now, and we were, when it was decided to go with a consulting firm, we wanted to wait on anything we did, so we didn't have to revisit it until we got them, and so those will be done, and how we, they will get the first discussion, they won't qualify as interviews, they only have the first discussion with the candidates, and then present all of the candidates to us for a review, and what and how we are reviewing them will be part of what we will be developing over the last few weeks.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, so the 300th committee met on Monday. They are meeting a little too soon to do anything other than talk about long-term projects, but they're still discussing events that they want to have. The Bonfire is still the most-wanted event, but obviously the location is the biggest issue there. They discussed historic signs similar to the Tersenteneri signs that were put up by Massachusetts in the 1930s. So they're researching some locations and verbiage for potential signs that we could put up. They talked about establishing or planning an above-ground time capsule, similar to the one that was done in Braintree, and having it out to 50 years, I believe. The anniversary is on August 1st, since it falls on a weekday. The celebrations are going to be from July 28, 2028, through July 30, sorry about that, 2028, and they want to have events like fireworks and a possible carnival and Olympics. Not sure what that means. I wasn't able to attend this meeting in person, so I'm getting this update through someone else. And they're also, this is a really interesting one, they're looking for potato-shaped rocks to use for the Luther Burbank monument from builders and excavators in town. So anyone know why?
I know, I was just saying, what size? I mean, are we talking about, like...
I'm not sure, that's the one, I wish I asked for clarification, so I had an actual explanation for that. But yeah, so it was a pretty good meeting. Council on Aging met last week, and it was their first recorded and broadcasted meeting. So if you'd like to watch it yourself, you can, and see all the work that they do and get all the updates yourself. But yesterday, right, yes, it was yesterday, we had our celebration at the Adult Activities Center for the new Boston Post Kane awardee, Olga Di Tomaso, which was a great event. I was honored to be there, it was a lot of fun, and her entire family showed up, all generations. I think she had, I don't remember off the top of my head, but 13 or something like that grandchildren, I think it was upwards of 10 great-great-grandchildren, maybe four great-great-grandchildren? I think I might have messed that up, but something along those lines.
Okay.
So it was a lot of fun. And they are holding their annual Volunteer Recognition Day on Friday.
Thank you.
Their recognition day for the people working at the Council on Aging?
For the volunteers, no, so the volunteers at the Lunenburg Adult Activities Center.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, upcoming meetings, so it sounds like we're not doing the goals workshop tonight? Are we all in agreement that we'd rather do it another night? I know that Carter wants to, so I'm fine with that.
I'm fine either way.
All right, we can reschedule, it's fine with me. So upcoming meetings, we'll be meeting on...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? The document that you shared with us, does that include everyone's goals? I only had a chance to review it.
It includes the goals that I have received, so it's you, me, and Tom.
If I may ask, just for no right to not consolidate, preconsolidate them, if you can show them in their entirety the way they were submitted?
Yeah, that's fine.
We need to consolidate them. I appreciate the attempt to consolidate them, but I think it may have confused things a little bit, too.
So, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And then, can I, sorry, one more on that. When we do have the workshop, can we set it up so that, you know, we have a laptop set up maybe for a screen, and we can make live edits as we're workshop-ing?
Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to do. Yep, that's why I have this one here, which is not the normal one that I have, so.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, upcoming meetings, October 1st and October 8th. I'm tracking that Slakman Emke will not be here on October 1st. Are there any other anticipated absences during those two meetings? All right, cool. Public comments, so are there any public comments from the interim town manager?
None, Mr. Chair.
All right, any public comments from the public? See if anyone on Zoom has a public comment? Nope. Any public comment from the board?
None.
All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. It is 9:43 PM. This blackboard is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in tonight, and we will see you in October, pending a newly scheduled goals and maybe other topics workshop. Have a good night.
Good night.